Good evening. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30. I am calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. We are very pleased to have in attendance with us today to help us out with the Pledge of Allegiance, two members of the Colony Oaks Elementary Safety Patrol. If Michael Barrios and Leighton Hanna will step forward, and if y'all would all stand, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Y'all step up here, so everybody can see you, and everybody can hear you, I'm right there, whenever y'all are ready to start. He's coming to take pictures of you, just like I said, so y'all smiling and looking pretty.
Okay, guys, turn around.
I'll get together. If you'll remain standing, I'd like to ask Dr. Arthur Banks, one of our police chaplains, to come up and lead us in a word of prayer. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve the great city of Bastrop. We ask for your presence and wisdom to guide this meeting. May all decisions made reflect the values of inclusiveness, equity, justice, and service to every citizen. We pray for the leaders gathered here today, that you will endow them with vision and discernment. Help them to see beyond the immediate into the future that you have planned for Bastrop. May they be mindful of the responsibilities to every person who calls Bastrop home, regardless of race, creed, or color. Give the council courage to lead with integrity, ensuring that all citizens' voices heard and valued. Lord, we ask that you would fill the room with the spirit of collaboration, cooperation, and unity. Let the diversity of Bastrop be its strength. Let its leaders find common ground and shared goals for building a better community where every person, every citizen, be successful and prosper. Give the council wisdom to address the challenges that lies ahead, the humility to listen to their neighbors, and the boldness to enact policies that promote fairness and equity. May this service today reflect your heart for all people. May they carry the mantle of leadership with integrity, grace, and humility. Help them to communicate the vision of Bastrop clearly, so that all will understand and work to make it come together and achieve it. We commit this council meeting and the city of Bastrop into your hand, and may the peace, justice, and love prevail in all actions transacted here today and in the future. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Banks. Y'all may be seated. We'll immediately move to presentations. I have a short mayor's report. Since our last council meeting, I wanted to share some happenings between then and now. On October 1st, immediately after the city council meeting, I, along with other members of this council, went to the National Night Out events put out by our outstanding neighborhoods and groups. Many thanks to our first responders, including our own police and fire department, for their participation, and more importantly, to the service they provide to us daily. On October 4th, I was able to visit with some of our high school students at the PAC Center, the Performing Arts Center. They had questions for members of the city government, the school district, law enforcement, planning, and zoning, and others. They not only had questions, they had some potential solutions. Transportation and food were major topics with them. We definitely have some bright students in our school district. Then on October 8th, I met with our potential sports complex consulting firm to brainstorm on expectations, needs, and concerns, good discussions, but anticipating more in-depth discussions and questions that move toward the goal. I, along with the rest of the council, as well as leaders within our community, with our EDC, are going over this potential project, so stay tuned. On October 9th through the 11th, all of the council attended the municipal league conference with our city manager. It was an outstanding opportunity to learn, as well as network, with other municipalities in order to become better elected officials. Always learn so much from our municipal league, Texas Municipal League Conference. Now, on October 15th, I was asked to sit in at Austin Mayor Kirk Watson's table for Austin State of the City breakfast meeting. You know, what happens in Austin has an effect and an impact on us, both good and bad. By being at the table, both figuratively as well as literally, I'm able to convey our concerns, as well as participate in regional discussions and solutions. I will continue to do so to ensure that we maintain the uniqueness of our city without being overrun by that monolith to our west. And then later that evening, we had our boards and commissions interviews. Really appreciate our community volunteers who have stepped up with the willingness to serve. I appreciate their patience. It was a long night. The fruits of those interviews will be addressed later on in the conference through several agenda items. And now we're at the 22nd of this month, and ready to start anew. That ends my report. Mayor Protem, do you have anything you wish to add?
I would just like to encourage everyone to get out and vote, because it's that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossler?
Hi, good evening, everyone. We are, I hope you stick around, because we are looking, we're doing a visioning workshop right at the top of the agenda, our council visioning workshop for our comprehensive plan. We haven't looked at it since 2016, so I hope it's, I know it's going to be very interesting. I hope you will stick around and be a part of that process. It's the most important thing we could be doing right now, in my opinion, is mapping out how we want our, how we want to grow in the next 30 years. So please stay and be a part of that conversation. I also went to TML, and I want to talk about our neighborhood walk program at the next meeting, because I want to flesh it out a little more with the city manager, but coming to a neighborhood near you is us, will be coming to your neighborhood, and having more personal interactions with all of our citizens. And also, I want to, as we appoint and nominate and confirm all the boards and commission members tonight, I want to give a big thank you to everyone who is outgoing on a board and commission, who has served and who has invested in our town. It is very much appreciated. So that's a big night also, not only for the confirmations, but to recognize the service of those who have served and are stepping off as of tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll change it up a little bit. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. Lots of stuff happened since the last time we met, the TML conference. I had a blast at the TML conference. I volunteer for the annual golf tournament, which kicks off the conference. I really just ride the golf carts around and give out water, but it's a fun event. Lots of people, lots of vendors, lots of engineers. People came from out of state to the golf tournament, so it was pretty big, and we raised a lot of money. That money goes towards scholarships. I also moderated my first session at the conference. I was a little nervous going in, but it ended up being really good. It was about wastewater and how to detect viral loads in wastewater. So it ended up being really fun to be able to do that and ask to be able to do that. And then I was elected ultimately to serve on another board for the TABCCM, which is the Texas Association of Black City Council Members, asked me to serve on the board and also participate in regional ten efforts. So I ended up walking away with job duties, but I had a great time. I was asked to attend the St. John's Harvest Festival, so St. John's Colony is one of the Freedom Colonies here in Bastrop County. And they reached out and asked if I would come for the annual harvest festival, along with other local city officials in Austin and abroad. And it was really interesting to just ride around. They showed areas of where blacks lived, where they went to live safely and build their own community, and then they talked about how the help that they need to try to sustain that as a historical place in Bastrop County. So it was my first time going out there, well, at least knowing what was out there. I'd been out there before, but I appreciated them inviting me to that, along with the other city officials that were invited. I wanted to just give a shout out to Toyota. Toyota is one of a kind. They are always hosting events. I don't think I've ever seen cardholdership use their space in a way that helps bring community together, but they celebrated Hispanic Cultural Month, along with Ascension Catholic Church. And I so appreciate everything that Ascension Catholic Church does for our community as well. They provide a lot of community needs to people in the community that we don't even know about. So thank you all for all that you do. I too want to thank the volunteers that came out to interview. We had a lot of volunteers, more than I've seen in the three years that I've been on council, and it's great to see that people are interested in being part of the planning that happens in this community, especially with the growth that we are experiencing. We need community input as much as possible. So thank you all for coming out. If you weren't selected for a board this go-around, don't give up. There's going to always be a spot there somewhere. And then upcoming events, I'm so excited about Boobash. Who doesn't love Boobash? So I encourage everyone to get out for Boobash, especially bring the kiddos out to the library, where they'll be doing trunk retreats there, but just, I usually walk from my house downtown and just walk around downtown. How lucky are we to be able to do that in the city of Bastrop? Veterans Weekend is coming up on November 9th, and like Mayor Protem, early voting has begun. I voted yesterday, so if you have not gotten an opportunity to vote, please, please, please do so. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Just to, in respect to your time, keep it quick. I also went to the high school and talked with the students, and I will tell you, if you don't have the answers, talk to the students, because they do. And two of their big concerns, and as well as I'm sure ours, is why don't the sidewalks go past the railroad tracks? Something to think about. Master Transportation Plan is going to address that. Thank goodness, we've added that to that, so we can hopefully fix that problem. Second thing was, there's not enough parking for them. And I asked them, is there enough parking downtown? They said, there's not enough parking downtown. So they spoke to my heart, because that's my, one of my top issues. So the youth have the answers, so stop sometimes and just listen to them. Also quickly, on Thursday, they're going to be filming indie movie downtown called Pearl, and it's going to close Main Street from Chestnut to Farm for about four hours in the morning. The map is online, you can look at it. Alli A is going to be closed most of the day, so just have patience. It'll be great. We'll get through this, and we'll all have a great time. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett?
No, thanks.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to Agenda Item 4C. We have a public, sir, I have very few notes on this, Madam City Manager. We have a public service announcement from our Youth Advisory Board.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Hi.
If you will introduce yourselves, please.
Absolutely. It would be our pleasure. My name's Ashlyn Watzel. I work for the Family Crisis Center, and just like Councilmember Meyer was saying, the youth really do have the answers, and we use that to our benefit with our Youth Advisory Board. As most of you probably know, the Family Crisis Center works to eliminate and provide resources to those who are experiencing domestic violence and sexual violence in Bastrop County, as well as many other counties around us. And one of our wonderful resources that we have worked diligently on creating is the Youth Advisory Board. This Youth Advisory Board is students from Bastrop High School, Circa, Elgin High School, and Cedar Creek High School. With me today, I have our Bastrop County Board President, Arwin, and she's going to share with you some information on the different Awareness Month campaigns that we have going on right now. Years past, we have focused on getting proclamations, but this year, we're really working on educating, and so we really wanted to express our gratitude to U.S. council members for hearing us out today. And I don't want to take any more time from her, but I just really wanted to say thank you for giving young people in our, in our city, in our town, a voice, because they really do have so much to give to us, and we have so much to learn from them. So I'm going to be quiet now. It's Arwin's turn.
Thank you.
Before we begin, I would like to give a trigger warning. There is a mention of harassment, sexual assault, rape, bullying, cyberbullying, domestic abuse, abuse, mental health, and stalking. Good afternoon, everyone. As you heard, my name is Arwin Ayala, and I am very delighted to have this opportunity to speak with you today. I have lived in Bastrop for almost 11 years. I went to Emile Elementary, Lost Pines Elementary, Bastrop's Intermediate and Middle Schools, and I am currently attending Bastrop High School. I am here today on behalf of the Bastrop Family Crisis Center's Youth Advisory Board. The YAB is dedicated to ending violence within schools and our communities through awareness and education. In the past decade of living in Bastrop, I have noticed that some of our largest social issues we face in the community are bullying and domestic violence. Therefore, I come here to speak to you today as a member of the community and as the county president of the Youth Advisory Board. Did you know that October is Bullying and Domestic Violence Awareness Month? As a member of YAB, I'm here to share as much information as possible about bullying and domestic violence, and things that contribute to its causes and effects, encouraging members in the community to stop it before it starts and mend what has already been done. Bullying is the use of force, coercion, hurtful teasing, or threat to abuse, aggressively dominate or intimidate. The behavior is often repeated and habitual. One essential prerequisite is the perception by the bully or by others of an imbalance of physical or social power. This imbalance distinguishes bullying from conflict. Did you know that 1 in 5 students report that they have been bullied according to the National Bullying Prevention Center, not including students who did not speak out? Domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain power and control over another intimate partner. Domestic violence can be physical, sexual, emotional, economic, psychological, or technological actions or threats of actions, or other patterns of coercive behavior that influence another person within an intimate partner relationship. This includes any behaviors that can intimidate, manipulate, humiliate, isolate, frighten, terrorize, coerce, threaten, blame, hurt, injure, or wound someone. Did you know over 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the U.S. have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime? Bullying is abuse, and it affects both the person's mental and physical health. Gossip, words, comments, notes, facial expressions don't cause any physical harm, but can sometimes be more harmful than physical harm. I can attest to this both as the bully and the victim. When I was around 7, I moved to Bastrop, made some friends, and those friends were nice to me, but not to others. Sorry. Being new and wanting to fit in, I followed them saying the same things they did and acting the same way. As I got older, we started going to bigger schools, and more and more people knew each other, and I felt more alone. People started saying things and even attempting to cause me harm. I fought back, said meaner things, and threatened them when they tried to harm me. High school is even more complicated. We have blurred the lines between what is joking and having fun, and what is bullying, making fun of, or putting down those around us. The more I realized this, the more I saw it everywhere I went. Coworkers, friends, family, and even strangers on the street seem so desensitized to things that happen to them or others. A female is in public with what seems to be her partner and is uncomfortable with the way he is displaying his affection towards her. She does not say it outright, but her body language speaks volumes. A boy is walking home when a school bus drives by, and kids put down their windows just to throw trash at him. A mom is at home cooking dinner and taking care of the kids after a long day of work when the husband comes home drunk and starts physically assaulting the wife in front of the kids. All of these examples are unfortunately things that our community experiences, whether it be behind closed or open doors. I realize these may be uncomfortable for some, but these are real-world experiences and are regrettably becoming more popular. That is why community support is so crucial for these issues, and why we have come to speak with you today, the leaders of Bastrop, of the Bastrop community. We ask that you and others share your experiences, encourage your family, friends, and children to talk to you, to create connections that give them the confidence to do so, help others stand up to bullying and raise awareness on what it is, for a kid who bullies also gets bullied at home. I would like to share some statistics on bullying. Over 50% of children are targeted for cyberbullying. 26.5% of American teenagers have experienced cyberbullying within the last 30 days. 1 out of 8 adolescents admit to cyberbullying. 46% of bullied students report notifying an adult at school about the incident. 41% of students who reported being bullied at school indicated that they think the bullying would happen again. Of those students who reported being bullied, 13% were made fun of, called names, or insulted. 13% were subject to rumors. 5% were pushed, shoved, tripped, or spit on, and 5% were excluded from activities on purpose. 73% of girls and young women have received unwanted sexual content. And 48% of U.S. adults think that harassment is a major problem on X, formerly Twitter. Some say bullying makes children tougher and is not a serious problem, but the reality is that students who are bullied are more likely to report increased negative effects to their emotional and physical health. Research shows that children who are bullies are 4 times more likely to grow into abusive partners. This is why it is vital we teach our kids the dangers and outcomes that can come from bullying. Intimate partner violence alone affects more than 12 million people every year. Almost half of all women and men in the U.S. have experienced psychological aggression by an intimate partner in their lifetime. 1 in 4 women and 1 in 7 men aged 18 and older in the U.S. have been the victim of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. An average of 24 people per minute are victims of rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States. More than 12 million women and men over the course of a single year. Nearly 3 in 10 women and 1 in 10 men in the U.S. have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by a partner, and reported it having an impact on their functioning. We cannot change the things that have already happened, and we cannot stop it from currently happening, but we can stop it from happening down the road. The youth of Bastrop County are the ones who will have to endure it in their future, should they have to suffer, should they have to experience the tragedies that arise from bullying and domestic abuse. I think we all know the answer. Please join me, the Family Crisis Center's CATE team, and the Bastrop County's Youth Advisory Board, in our mission. Let's stop it before it starts. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your courage, and I admire your advocacy. Thank you so much. Okay, council, the next is a proclamation of the city council recognizing November 1st, 2024, as Arbor Day, the city of Bastrop. Ms. Moore?
Just want to bring to everybody's attention that November 1st is Arbor Day. That is celebrating our trees. We are a tree city, and we're just hoping that people will start planting more and start protecting our trees, so. Go, team.
Thank you so much. Do we have a proclamation that needs to be read? I think it needs to be read by the city secretary?
I can read it.
Thank you.
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, beginning in 1889, Arbor Day has been observed and celebrated in Texas, and whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas, the city of Bastrop Parks and Recreation Department commits to continue to plant new trees in our parks and public spaces as a source of joy and enjoyment. And now, therefore, I, Sylvia Correio Trevino, city manager of the city of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2024, as Texas Arbor Day in Bastrop, Texas.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Moore. On 4E, we have a proclamation for Debbie Denny Day. Madam City Secretary?
Yes, and I guess they knew that was happening today.
They're probably going to come here at 6:30.
So confusion on the agenda?
Probably.
Okay.
They were notified.
Let's hold off, because our normal start time is 6:30. A lot of people depend on that, so.
Okay.
We'll just hold off on that. Y'all can all handle that, can't you? Yeah. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 5, work sessions and briefings. I will say, there may be some confusion on 5B. We received it quite late, and I'm not sure our public has had a chance to review it. On one page, it says that the presentation is going to be from 5:30 to 6:30, and then actually, on our agenda, it says from 6:00 to 6:45. But we'll go ahead and move to item 5A, Presentation of New Gen Strategies and Solutions Regarding the City of Bastrop's Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Rate Study. Ms. McElwain?
Good evening. We have got Richard Campbell here with New Gen Strategies, who is going to give you the presentation on the impact fee study that we have been working on for quite a while, and here he is.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilmember. Thank you for having me to talk about impact fees. Who doesn't want to do that? When we roll through this, I'm going to not stay long on some slides. I realize y'all have seen some of this already, so I don't want to dwell on anything. Please stop me if you have questions on any of it. We're not asking for any action tonight also, so this is really just informational, to make sure everybody's up to speed on this. We've been working on these for a little bit now, on the water and the wastewater side. Y'all have seen this before. Most of these slides, impact fees, again, just a reminder, they're really to allow municipalities a means to recover revenues for new growth. They look at the 10-year period in the future, and it's just another way of collecting revenues, actually, and it's specifically for new growth. For Texas, Chapter 395 dictates how we do this. It specifies what can be included in that. It specifies how we recover it, when we do it, what kind of meetings take place, what's all part of the calculation. So when we go through this, it's a very methodical process in calculating these and talking about these. Y'all will have some dates and times that y'all have to hit after this, once we're kind of up to speed, and then so we'll really start moving for y'all at that point. So when we're doing impact fees, again, we talked about it's for new growth. They're very specific things, but then, in being specific, it really allows you to recover almost everything that you've got involved in new growth. So you can recover land cost, cost of the engineering, cost of development for programs, the cost of the infrastructure, financing of the infrastructure. So it really recovers just about everything that you've got when you're dealing with the new growth. What it doesn't allow you to do is it doesn't allow you to recover anything not associated with new growth. Really, you can't recover O&amp;M through that, operating expenses, any debt service that isn't associated with growth. So you can recover debt service. You are allowed to pay debt and cover your debt on growth-related items. So if you issue debt on growth-related capital projects, you can use impact fees to pay for that. Can't use impact fees to pay for anything else that's not growth-related. All your O&amp;M costs. Capital projects, when we're doing this, and y'all are well aware, you developed a capital program to account for the growth, and you talked about growth already and how you're planning on that. When you did that, you're looking at growth-related projects, and you're also looking at what else you have to do on your system. For impact fees to be, so in order to use impact fees to pay for that, it has to be in that capital program. When we're doing this and going through the process, I mentioned that 395 is very specific on how we do this. So start off with the Land Use Assumption Plan, and it really is exactly what it says. You're sitting there, we're looking at the land, we're looking at where your growth might occur, where the projections are, how that growth might occur, residential, commercial, how much, what areas, and really, the cap- And really, the capital program is built off of that. So once that growth is projected and developed and how it's going to grow, then the capital program reflects that very specifically. Timelines on that, what kind of capacity is available. Once the growth is projected, you also look at the existing system. So you have two parts of that. You know, how much of your existing system can handle your new growth? How much of the growth has to be met by new construction? So those are the big components on this. When we're doing this, keep in mind, we're looking at a 10-year period. So these, from an impact fee standpoint, when you do have them in place, which you do, at a maximum, they have to be updated every five years. So you can do them sooner if you have things that are happening. If it's not exactly going to plan, growth is going faster, growth is going slower, costs are changing, construction costs like they are now, so you can look at those, and there are reasons to look at them earlier, but the maximum is five years on these. When we develop these, as we've gone through the land use assumptions, we developed that. We developed the capital program for this, so we developed all the costs associated with all the costs associated with growth, what that infrastructure cost is going to be. I mentioned earlier, we can also include financing costs, so the cost of issuing debt, the interest associated with issuing debt. All those can be included in the impact fee-related costs. So that's part of it. And then another part of it is revenue credit calculation. The purpose of this in 395 lays it out very specifically, kind of vague. So, and then they let you run with it. The purpose of it, though, is really to ensure that we're not double counting. So we're not going to charge your ratepayers something in the rates, and then also charge them for that same piece of infrastructure in the impact fee. So that is the key on this, and there's a lot to it in doing the calculation. If you don't do the calculation, you can default here to the 50% credit, and basically you just cut your capital program in half, and that meets the same letter of the law for Chapter 395. And again, keep in mind, the only purpose of that is to make sure we're not having your ratepayers pay for both, in the rates and in the impact fees. So once we go through that whole process, we've done the land use assumptions, we've developed the capital program, we've calculated credits, put all that together. The goal for us, really here, is to develop a maximum allowable impact fee that will cover the cost of your construction to address new growth. And that's really the extent of it. And then, unfortunately, or fortunately, the burden's on you to decide how you want to apply that, implement that. So from a standpoint of calculation and getting that, we've got the CIP. We developed the credit for that, and then we just divide that by the new service units. Maybe this is definitely an oversimplification, but that's what the calculation looks like. So you had two pieces here. You have a water impact fee right now and a wastewater impact fee. As I mentioned, at a maximum, you have to do them every five years. It hasn't been five years for that, but we are looking at it for a reason. We looked at the water CIP, we looked at the water land use assumptions, and they're tracking pretty close to what expectations are, so there's not a reason to change that. We don't want to mess with it if we don't have to. On the wastewater side, though, you do have some drivers that are causing us to look at it now. So what we have done is we've utilized a 4% growth factor, which what that did for us is that over the next 10-year period that we're looking at this, you're going to add about 3,582 new wastewater customers. Also, in the time period, we looked at 37 new wastewater CIP projects going into that, and the driver is your plant expansion. So that's what you have going on on the wastewater side that we don't have on the water side. So that's why we're looking at the wastewater. The two options that you're looking at are a 4-MGD or a 6-MGD plant expansion. So you can see in the second column there, the total project amounts. It includes different things. Both of them have the treatment cost, pumping cost for your collection lines, and the cost of the study also gets included in here as well. The total cost on the 4-MGD plant expansion is going to be a little over $301 million for the whole process. On the 6-MGD, it's going to be almost $366 million for the 6-MGD plant expansion. However, if you look in the third column, all we're allowed to include is what's actually going to be used for the next 10-year period. So that's what that third column represents. So on the 4-MGD plant expansion, that 300, almost $302 million, only 52, a little over $52 million is actually allocated for the next 10-year period. We'll continue as you update, as you go through the next five-year update, and the next five-year update, you'll capture more of that, but this is just what we can include right now in the 10-year calculation. And then here's what we did to go ahead and do the impact fee calculation. So you see in the far-right two columns, the 4-MGD and the 6-MGD, we've got the cost of the plant, what's allowed for the next 10-year period, the cost of both plants. On the 4-MGD, 6-MGD, both on line two, we've had the financing cost, assuming you're issuing debt for this. This was the financing cost associated with that portion. Then we back out the interest that you'll earn as you're holding that money as well, because you will earn interest on it, and you have fund balance right now. So we'll back those out. So the amount that you're allowed to recover, less those are on line five, about $61 million on the 4-MGD, and almost $62 million on the 6-MGD plant. From there, we just divide that, both of them, by the service units, that 3,582 new customers over the 10-year period. So for the 4-MGD plant expansion, that leaves us with a maximum allowable number of $17,006. Told you, we also have to apply the credit. We either do the revenue calculation, or else we do the 50%. We chose to do the 50% on this one, the 50% credit, so we took and cut the CIP program in half. So that leaves you $8,503 of a maximum allowable impact fee that you could charge for the 4-MGD. You're currently at $5,089, so about $3,414 difference. On the 6-MGD, you come to a maximum allowable, from the $17,006, you go to $17,251 on the 6-MGD. That's a maximum allowable number that you can charge. Again, apply the 50% credit of $86.25, so you have $5,089 for the current, and your new one is $3,536 difference. So your two numbers that you're dealing with are on line eight. Your $8,503 of maximum allowable for 4-MGD plant expansion, and then $8,625 for the 6-MGD plant expansion. So this is what you have on the wastewater side for collecting for the next 10-year period, with the plant expansion being the big drivers on that. But those are not the only things that are in here.
Councilmember Meyer, you have a question?
I do. Just since you're on the issue right now, I thought I'd bring it up. How do you calculate the 4% growth factor? Is that pretty conservative for the next 10 years?
It is a little bit conservative, yes it is. We would rather be conservative on that side, and it's really done from the engineering side on that, and looking at growth, at the historical growth, and then what's happening right now, as things are slowing down a little bit. We'd rather be conservative than the other way. If yours like to look at it the other way.
I think our city manager has something to add to that.
No, because I'm chomping at the bit. The only thing we can count is what's actually been submitted on the ground. I can't count any of the speculative stuff that's coming through. He won't believe me because it may not happen.
Thank you.
Correio?
We're really about it, other than what we recommend there. And we're recommending using the 50% credit method. Again, leaving water alone, there is not a reason to change the water side, the wastewater side, then you have the drivers. But we're recommending the $8,503 for the 4-MGD, and then at the 6-MGD, then $8,625. This will be for a 3/4-inch meter. So what we've done is we've brought all of the growth in to an equivalent 3/4-inch meter, whether it was a commercial, industrial, whatever it is. AWWA has meter equivalency factors. It's all tied to how much can flow through a meter. So what you'll do, for example, if you adopted the $8,503 for a 3/4-inch meter, that's really residential customers, and so that's what they would pay if they were coming in to build a new house. Then it would just be some derivative off of that. For example, it might be an inch and a half meter, maybe 2.5 times, and it's just the amount of flow that goes through the meter. So that's how we'll get to the other meters, 3/4-inch, 1-inch, inch and a half, 2, and so on. So that's how it's calculated. So that's what we're also recommending, that you apply the AWWA factors on that to get to your other meters.
Councilmember Lee, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to, I almost lost my train of thought while I was waiting. What was I going to ask? Oh, so we, in our engineering study, the preliminary engineering study, there was 4, 6, and 10. Have we got to a point where we've decided if we need 4, 6, or 10 with the growth that's coming in terms of the expansion?
So it's 4, 6, and it's 4 and 6. We'd get to a total of 8. If we did some really special engineering with a different type of plant, we could potentially get to 10, but that's not what the current proposal is with the type of engineering that has been done. So one of the conversations we had today with an alternate engineering firm who's verifying some data is what is, what's the ROI on 4, and then what's the ROI on 6? 6 taking us to the maximum capacity under current design. I won't have that data for, you know, several, several weeks, because some of the data has errors that we need to clean up. But the other portion of this is our discussion with Correx on, you know, what portion are they going to need, what flows are we going to take, and what portion of the plant can they pay for? So.
So we're still trying to, because that will determine which of these we go for, right?
Yes.
What is your, in your opinion, with the growth that's coming? We're going to need a 6 easily, yeah?
Easily. And if you look at the numbers on the prior slide, I mean, the difference from a 4 to a 6 is not a lot. I mean, operationally, he's going to have to do some magic tricks to get the plant. The critters who like to eat the things in the plant to keep our plant running, they'll have to do some magic tricks to feed those critters, but feeding those critters is still cheaper in building it in today's dollars versus future dollars. I mean, I could go into the gory stats, but I won't do that on what we do to feed critters.
So should we not then have an option for 6 to 8?
No, because I don't have a design to take it to 10. If I were to take it to 10, it would have to be a redesign of some alternate engineering methods.
Okay.
And I don't have that today. We are talking to three additional firms besides our existing firm to verify some of the data and, you know, give us a clearer picture of what we have in front of us.
Okay. Can we get a copy? Because we didn't get this presentation that I can recall.
Sure. I think it's in here. If it's not, we'll get you a copy before even the meeting's over. The other important thing to consider is we know we have speculative development, and we know once that line on 969 goes in, we know there's going to be an explosion of growth. And who, what, when, and where, and how we pay for that is going to be super critical. I can't give that to them to calculate because I don't actually have it on the ground, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Correio, sir?
We've hit it, Mr. Mayor. The only other thing is just showing where you would compare. Now, right now, we're in the middle of some of the surrounding utilities as far as impact fees. On the wastewater side, either of these proposals will put you near the top. Keep it in mind, again, these numbers here are the maximum allowable. So when we talk about comparisons, I couldn't tell you what was adopted on any of the other ones. For instance, Pleasant on that, $1,149. I couldn't tell you if that was the maximum allowable, or they decided to drop to 10% of what the maximum allowable is, so there's no way, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So this can show you where everybody's at, but not what they actually did.
And they may well be in review themselves.
Yes.
We don't know when the last time that they adopted those fees.
That's exactly it.
Councilmember Foster?
Hi, thanks for this. I met y'all at TML2 and sat in on one of your presentations, and I'm very excited for y'all to come here. For the impact fee, like, I've sat in on some other impact fee workshops where they talk about, like, phasing in for the customer. What do y'all recommend, or is that up to us? Is it like a drop-dead date and everything goes up? Is it a phase-in over a few years? Like, what do y'all recommend?
It depends.
Or what are the options available?
Right. You need to go to the mics so the people at home can...
You could really get off, it's almost get off the train at any point.
Okay.
Unfortunately, if you decided we're going to adopt 40%, and we want to phase that in over two years to get there, there is no right answer, really. We've got some of them, New Braunfels, they've just gone up a good bit. They adopt 100% every time and put it in place right then. There are others who really do a two- and three-year phase-in of a portion of it. So there is, there really is no right or wrong answer on that one.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, whatever's not done here has to go into the rate base to collect the rest of the revenue.
Okay. And then so this rate, this maximal allowable rate, is what is recommended for five years, that rate? Or does it, is there an incremental, it's like, good for five years?
This is what's recommended for five years. Yes, ma'am.
So we approve this rate at 100%, and in two years find that we do have those other developments who had been speculative and aren't anymore, and we need to go into some additional expansion of the system, then we can revisit it again.
And that's a great point. And you really want to, because if you find out things are changing from what your expectations were, you'd like to address it as fast as you can.
Because the reality of it is, if we don't pass it on to the developer at the impact fee, we have to pass it on to the ratepayer in the rates. And I don't know about you, but I'm not going to go tell the 65-year-old person on a fixed income that I need to raise the rate because I need to pay for new development.
I got you. When you said revisit, so say we don't have some of the speculative development coming, we need to revisit. We wouldn't revisit it upward beyond the allowable without doing another thorough deep dive and study, right?
Correct.
We're talking about like a revisit.
Revisit it. The city won't ever, this, the legalities involved with this are super intricate. We would never do it ourselves. We'd always have New Gen do it. But by the time I meet with New Gen, I better have preliminary plats on the ground, I better have some thing that is showing the driver, because he's going to tell me to kick rocks down the road. So if in two years, some of that speculative development on 969 that we're expecting does come, I'm going to go knock on a door and go, I got to revisit it. And we may be higher at that particular point, because again, it's, you know, where do we, where is that cost fairly born?
Extremely dynamic process, or it would have to be, especially with explosive growth. So, Councilmember Pluckett?
With our deal with Correx and their participation, are their customers going to be subject to the same impact fee, assuming that they... I want to make sure that the wholesale customers that we have, I guess I'll speak more broadly in case there are others, other than just the Correx, are they going to be subject to the same impact fees that our direct customers are?
So I will tell you, our future wholesale agreements must be written in that way. We have an existing water wholesale agreement that is horrible, and I don't know who wrote it, and I'm going to ask legal to duck so I don't send something that way, but, yes, our future development agreements and our wholesale agreements should say it's adjusted as.
And so on wastewater, it is that way?
Any one of our wholesale agreements need to be that way.
Right. But I know we have a current.
It is not that way.
It's not, thank you.
Duck bin.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. So I think the point we talked about is five years is too long, because as fast as we're growing, you know, I know every year, but absolutely, I think, the more, the better, just because we're changing so quickly. And I think it's critical that we consider moving forward with the rate, that whatever we're going to decide on. I don't want us to get caught up in this thing of competition, and, oh, if we set it too high, then they're not going to come. They're coming here, people. They're coming here. They're coming here. So we need to make sure that we do not encumber our citizens that are already here with pricing them out of being able to be here by passing on charges, by not getting our impact fees right. So those are my main things I want us to keep thinking about.
Thank you, ma'am. All righty, uh, next steps?
We've got a series of publications. We have super critical public notice documents. Council won't be able to take any action on adoption of this until the January timeframe. Merry Christmas.
Councilmember Foster.
I don't recall at what stage our impact fees assessed. Permitting, bill?
Permitting.
Permitting.
Building permit.
Building.
And that, okay, so we have an impact fee and we have a TAP fee. So there's, there's a couple of different, Andres Viviana, impact fee is assessed at... So if you heard that, the rate assessed at the time of final plat collected at building permit.
One more time.
Rate assessed at final plat. Assessed at the time of final plat, collected at building permit.
Collected at building permit. Okay, thank you.
Because this is an extraordinarily important, so we do have some, one of our citizens would like to provide a comment on this item, and I'm going to allow it. Tom Leibowitz. Please tell me I pronounced that correctly.
Perfectly done. Thank you very much, La.
Thank you. Get your name, address. You have three minutes, sir.
Sure. Tom Leibowitz, fifteen-oh-one Hill Street slash nineteen-oh-nine Main Street. Just wanted to comment on the concerns around, at least my concern around increasing these fees by roughly seventy percent. I think that's going to be incredibly burdensome for people who want to buy. I've heard the concerns about passing on the costs to people who exist today through the rates, but it also means that there's gonna be significantly less affordability for people who want to move to the city. So sixty-five-year-olds who wanna live in Bastrop, people who have houses now but wanna downsize, who wanna live closer to town, those people are all going to feel the impact of increasing these fees by seventy percent. So I just wanted to express my concerns and to hopefully increase the recognition that making changes on behalf of one group of people at the expense of another is something that I would prefer for us to collectively avoid.
We appreciate the comments. Any further on the presentation? Any more questions, council? Seeing none, we thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, we're gonna move back to item four E on our proclamation. One of my favorite people in town has shown up and, uh... Yes, Debbie Denny, if you will, please stand. Approach the podium, please. And you're, and we have a proclamation that our city secretary is going to read for you.
Wow.
Surprise!
Thank you. I'm very surprised.
Madam City Secretary.
Yes, sir. Whereas, request was submitted to the city of Bastrop to acknowledge and pay tribute to Debbie Denny for her many contributions to the city of Bastrop, Bastrop's prosperity and tourism. And whereas, Debbie Denny was a founding member of the Bastrop Downtown Business Alliance and is an original board member of the Bastrop Alliance, serving as an officer in one capacity or another from twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-three. And whereas, as a marketing professional, Debbie has collaborated with local businesses to enhance their visibility, growing their revenue, all with great vision and impressible good humor. And whereas, the city wishes to express heartfelt appreciation to Debbie Denny, who embodies the highest standards of leadership, fostering collaboration, and goodwill among the business community to assist in developing creative new opportunities and activities to attract tourists to our community. Now therefore, I Sylvia Correio Trevino, city manager of the city of Bastrop County, of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby designate October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four as a day of recognition to honor Debbie Denny and encourage all citizens to celebrate Debbie Denny and her many volunteer extraordinaires in the city of Bastrop, who have made outstanding contributions to positive change in the city of Bastrop. Let us all remember that without volunteers, we'd be a nation without a soul. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of Bastrop to be affixed on this twenty-second day of October, twenty-twenty-four.
No, I'm just, I'm so, I'm so grateful. Thank you so much. That was so sweet and surprising. I didn't know what you were talking about. And that's, I call it.
Wait a minute, don't, don't, don't walk away because we kinda wanna bask in your glory. Can we come and take a picture with you, the whole council?
Oh, please. Oh, I'd love that.
Thank you to Councilmember Plunkett for placing this item on the agenda.
She told him you texted her.
Well deserved. You know you're important when we move things around the agenda because you were here late, so. Thank you so much. We'll move back to the agenda, move to item five B, a presentation update from chapters two and five of the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan developed by Haff and Associates. This is, uh, uh, Ms. Higgins, you wanna introduce this again to, to the members of, to our citizens. Y'all have not had a chance to review this as of, as of yet, and I know that you're gonna have comments at some point in time, but we're going to hear a presentation tonight. Kinda introducing, I would hope.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. So tonight, we have Haff and Associates here, we have Whitney and Ilda. I'm gonna call them up. They're gonna introduce themselves again, and they're gonna go over presentation. This is for the update to the comprehensive plan back in twenty-sixteen, was originally wrote. This is an update for chapters two and chapter five, without further ado.
Mayor, hang on, before, Mayor, I wanna just clarify that this is truly just a presentation. There are surveys out to the public. This is but one of many meetings to be had, so the public is going to have ample opportunity. I don't want anybody to believe that this, this is gonna be their one shot.
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Whitney Linder. Thank you so much for having us. And I will try to go through this very quickly in respect of our time constraints, and so we'll be going through some of these slides pretty quickly.
I want you to speak up just a little bit so make sure the microphone...
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and like Kennedy mentioned, Ms. Higgins mentioned, we'll be going over chapters two and five for this comprehensive plan update that was originally written in twenty-sixteen. And these chapters focus specifically on community growth and land use in Bastrop. And so, um, our outcomes are, that we're hoping to achieve in this workshop today is really gather consensus and hear from you, the council and the mayor. I'll be providing a quick overview of our project, but again, what we're hoping to gather as we get into our discussion later within this presentation is to absorb input from you and to reach consensus on how to move forward with some elements of those two chapters, specifically the future land use plan. So here's our scope of project. I won't read this all together, but currently, we are in the processes of collecting existing conditions and data gathering and, and community engagement and doing analysis of the, the current plan and how that relates to existing conditions and the current zoning code. So a lot of these phases overlap, but as you can see, these are the various phases that the plan project has been broken out into. And as Ms. Correio mentioned, there are several, several groups that will be involved in this process. There will be quite a bit of community engagement throughout this process, and, and there will be more opportunities for the public to interact and to give their input and their feedback for this process. And there is a community survey that is going on right now, and so we'll give a little bit of feedback that we've heard on what that has gathered so far. Here is our proposed schedule, and this is subject to change, but you can see, here we are in October, and so we're meeting with you, the city council, and we have our survey ongoing. And our next steps will be meeting with planning and zoning. So here is a brief overview of what we've heard from the feedback that we've gathered so far. We've met with a technical committee once, which is a group comprised of key staff from the city. And so they really informed us that utility capacity is a major driver or hindrance in growth. And a lot of the growth that's being seen right now is primarily over in the western portion of the city, but we were informed that there's not a lot of infrastructure that's currently existing in that area as much as there is in the core center of, of the city limits. Most development is coming in as planned developments, which the city staff is finding favorable and, and simpler to work with in some cases. But most of the common zoning variations that are being seen with those planned developments are related to road and parking requirements. And it's our understanding that the future land use map that was developed as part of the twenty-sixteen plan is not regularly being referenced in development application and development review. And so here's some feedback from our first week of our community survey that has been ongoing. Overall, the respondents from the survey did agree with the sentiment of the goals that were in chapters two and five of the twenty-sixteen plan, especially related to water system capacity and water quality in the face of continued growth. And I will pass it over to Ilda to go over some historical growth.
Councilmember Foster, you have a question or comment?
I'm just so glad you're here. This is really important to us. You don't have to rush. Okay. Like, we're, we've been wanting this for a long time, so, like, this is really important. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Ilda Capricioso with Haff Associates, and I think Whitney was trying to get through sort of the basic stuff, but we wanna save time for the, for the conversation and feedback from, from council tonight, and that's really the important part. So a lot of the information that we heard earlier today is really talking about the growth that's happening, and boy, did I feel that when I drove into town from San Antonio as I was stuck through multiple traffic signals and such coming in, into your offices. And so, uh, so this, you know, this slide up here really is nothing new to y'all. This is really just proving that you all know you're growing, it's coming, it's coming fast, and it really will continue to grow. You had your wastewater professional talk about that four percent conservative growth. You know, we're finding the same thing when we do, when we average that out. It's about four to five percent of annual growth a year, and, and that will continue to, to continue to happen here. And that information is really sort of the baseline for how we start comprehensive planning, whether we do that in an update format or we do that in, you know, regular, full-scale comprehensive plan. And so that, that growth is really what highlights the need for the strategic planning, and you all are well aware of that and, and are taking the opportunity to do that now. That information, that population information as well as other things will really help to guide that future land use map, which we're gonna talk about later, really understanding how much, and I don't want you to, to, to be intimidated by this word of urbanization, how much urbanization will happen and how fast for your community. And then also, what that future land use map really tries to do is to really support the code, the regulations that your staff has and that developers have to understand how they can build in this community and really support that growth. So a couple, a couple things we like to do when we go through comprehensive planning processes, really just try to understand some general misconceptions that we often hear. Share those with you. And these are not misconceptions that you have. These are just often some misconceptions that we see and we hear when we visit community members, when we talk with community leaders or stakeholders. And so I just wanna run through a few of these that I have up there. So that first one really talks about land use regulations, maybe too restrictive or perhaps hinder development. And the reality is, is that thoughtful planning, as you all have been doing, really helps to balance that growth with those, about preserving those community values and those natural resources and that infrastructure capacity that you all are working on. When we talk about housing, you know, thinking about that housing and that commercial development, you know, people often think, well, that's really gonna improve my life. And while there are some benefits to that, one of the realities is that some of that unchecked growth can really strain your resources, traffic congestion, degradation of environmental quality. And so if it's not managed sustainably, that can really have a negative impact on the The next misconception that we, we often hear is that more development often leads to higher tax revenues for cities. They really feel that there's, you know, all that property tax that comes in. And while there is some of that that comes in, there are some infrastructure services and maintenance costs that often increase as cities grow, and you all are seeing that with your wastewater and many of the other services that the city provides. And so really understanding that, you know, as your development comes, being able to make sure that you can balance that, that development and offset those potential revenue gains. When we look at the trade-offs, when we talk about thinking about, oftentimes, we hear communities say, you know, they're not really thinking about sort of the long-term effects that might happen when there are a variety, or not enough of a variety of different land uses. So when it comes to this particular misconception, oftentimes, we hear communities thinking about the lack of diverse land use, which really forces residents to often travel longer than they need to for their jobs or for day-to-day services, medical services. And so really thinking about, you know, where your land use or how diverse your land use is within your community. The last two really talk about, again, more along that housing, so that increased housing density always leads to overcrowding and lowers living standards. A lot of times, we hear, we, you know, when we talk about community planning, we often talk to communities about the different types of land uses or the different types of housing densities that could be permitted within your community. And so there are often misconceptions that may, biases that lead to overcrowding or lower standards of living. And the reality is, is that oftentimes, when you have a variety of those land uses, a variety of housing types, you really have the opportunity for people to either live closer to the places they want to be or live further out, really have those choices of where they, where they want to live in their community. And then the, the last one is growth is solely driven by external factors like market trends or population flux. And I know on the onset, we talked about population, right, as sort of our baseline, but there are other things that really help to shape that, and those are your local policies, the land use planning efforts that you all are undertaking right now, those infrastructure investments, and of course, the community priorities that come to light through our survey and other information that we learn. So before we get started talking about some of the future land use map and some of the growth patterns, I wanted to just put this transect up here. This is what we call rural-to-urban transect, really just identifying the types of land pattern that happens in communities. It's very generalized on the top one, but on the bottom, these are all aerials from the city of Bastrop and, within this area. And so they align a little bit to each of the, the transects that you see up there. And so this may be something you want to maintain, or this may be something you want to change. And it's what we're asking you to think about today, when you think of it in a very broad way. Where does Bastrop sit? Or to what degree, along this transect or this spectrum of land use, do you want certain segments of your community here? Do you all have any questions?
So far, no.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I'm gonna pass it back to Whitney.
Thank you, Ilda. Okay, so I'm going to go through a few different iterations of land use planning tools that, and maps that have been used in, and just to kind of get us thinking towards how we want our future land use map to, to start looking and how, as we start developing that. And so this one specifically is the existing land use map. This was developed in twenty-sixteen as part of that comprehensive plan process. And this is very partial-specific. It was showing specifically what was on the ground at that time, and you'll notice a lot of this is likely the same. These patterns are probably the same that you're seeing in Bastrop today. And so this, again, partial-specific and observations of what was actually on the ground helps you inform this one, which is the future land use map, which was developed, again, as the land use guiding tool to help in decision-making related to zoning and future development as part of that current comprehensive plan. So it follows the similar patterns of that existing land use, but this one uses a little bit broader categories and is much less partial-specific. It's much more area-wide patterns. And then what we have next is, this is the current zoning place type map. And so this has different categories than what you would see in that traditional... And so this has different categories than what you would see in that traditional land use map that I just showed. In many ways, from our understanding, this is being used as that future land use map or in a sense of guiding those land use decisions. And so in terms of intensity, it generally sort of follows the same patterns. You can see, you know, with the darker purple along that western 71 corridor. It is important to note here that because zoning is strictly to the city limits, this does not project or help guide growth out into the city's ETJ in the same way that the future land use map does. The place types, as you are probably all aware, and the zoning code do not heavily dictate the permanent uses for each zoning place type. So it's up to the city in terms of development review processes to determine those a little bit more specifically. So part of our task with this plan update is to develop an updated future land use map that reflects the recent growth and can also provide flexibility for future development. And so now that we've kind of gone through these, I'd like you to think about how these existing tools should influence where we take that future land use map as we start developing that. And so I'll go into a couple of discussion questions in just a second, but what I kind of want you to start thinking about, if you can, is how has the city's land composition changed over the last five to 10 years? And this kind of goes back to the rural to urban transect that Ilda was just mentioning. And how should the land composition change over the next five to 10 years? And so as we think through that, the future land use map can help guide how that land composition transforms or evolves over the next five to 10 years.
Can you pause right there because I want to bring something of super importance to the council, and I hear, I see a lot of P&amp;Z members in here. Backfilling what is a zoning place type, as you heard her just mention, does not specifically align with uses. We don't have use. We have a form-based code, so long as I don't see it, smell it, or hear it, I can do it. We have very, very, very high impervious cover numbers. And so please shake your head as a planner would, up and down emphatically. We have very high impervious numbers. So today, as opposed to trying to fit something that the maps say should go there, we are working our way opposite in a mathematical equation. And developers really love this type of stuff because if they could fit it and the math works, here we go. So part of our job in the conversation with the planning commission coming up is urbanization is not a bad word, but it is not the only word. And it does not have a place in a lot of traditional Bastrop. And perhaps we need to find a place in some of the outer areas or some of the areas where the infrastructure can sustain it. But I just want council to be really, really aware that when we did the B3 code, we didn't necessarily look back to the comprehensive plan because that puzzle piece doesn't fit. It's a hard puzzle piece, and so what we're going to be doing through this exercise is shaving off some of those edges to try to make it fit. And I don't want to make anything fit. The residents should say what fits. But I also understand that if you have a color that's purple and it's got, you know, tonight, you're going to see a downzoning. You're going to see a downzoning from what the future land use map says should be agricultural. And we had a complete citywide zoning to commercial, to P5 commercial, 80% impervious cover. And we're downzoning tonight. Those are the important conversations about how this puzzle piece really fits to Bastrop. And I got to tell you, some of the stuff we have in our code is really scary.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Yes, so I just have one thing to mention to the citizens. If you remember Gateway Project, think about that. Think about the future land use, what that was behind Buggies and how that wasn't right. And it scared the heck out of me because it made me think, what the heck's going on in the whole city and what is wrong? And it's critical that you come and tell us, do you want to be urban? Do you want a new urbanism? Do you want high-density Austin, 1,800-square-foot lot size that everything fits in? You want 50 houses on four acres that can't already drive down the street, that you have 10 houses on? You need to start thinking about this, and you need to pay attention to where you live right now and what the B3 codes did to your zoning. Did it upzone you like we see a case tonight that we're going to hear? Because at the last P&amp;Z meeting, I saw that. I saw the family that's been here for six, seven, eight generations impacted. And thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission, for getting it right for that family. But I'm scared to death for all the families in this town that this could affect. So pay attention, come and participate, and don't let this happen in Bastrop, what's going on west in Austin. Please pay attention and participate.
Thank you, ma'am. Carry on, please.
Thank you. So that, I think, is actually the perfect segue into our first discussion question. So just a few short words or phrases. We want to hear from you. Like I said, we're here to absorb your input. What is the ideal Bastrop to you in 20 years? A comprehensive plan is looking out 20 years, and so we need to know now, what are we aiming to get to? What's our goal outcome? And so I'd like to hear from you. What's your ideal Bastrop in 20 years?
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. My ideal Bastrop is the Bastrop that has been for 64 years since I was born here. It's the reason you all want to be here. It's the reason we came from other places and we are here now. Authentic Bastrop is the people. Authentic Bastrop is not jamming 500 people into a tiny lot and encumbering the neighbors down the street that have lived there 70 years. These people want to stay in their houses. They want to age and live and die in Bastrop. We, it is not Bastrop. It is not the spirit of Bastrop to encumber our residents with new urbanism, new ideas, new Austin. That is what I want to see. I want us to remain authentic to the people as to what we have been for the past hundreds of years.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster.
Okay, I'll speak. I appreciate a diversity of land uses that fits all kinds of life cycles and lifestyles. I think that's really key to meeting people where they're at in their various life cycle and their stage of life for affordability. Yeah. So not only diversity of land uses, but also a diversity of houses that range from the more agricultural farm lots like we have, like in the north side, to some areas where we allow for higher density that allows people to be walkable and live in downtown. I'd like some of that infill development downtown to be dedicated to that in a place that perhaps in the, perhaps in the north end. So some infill development downtown, walkable, where people request that all the time and it doesn't quite exist yet. But really, like all ages of, all ages of the life cycle where they can age in place here, and also all cycles of like earning for all incomes can be here.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, mayor. So in 20 years, we know we're going to have a lot more people living in the city of Bastrop. And I think that while we definitely want to preserve our historic areas, which I consider Bastrop proper, is what I call, we understand that there's going to be growth, and we need to figure out how, what that growth is going to look like. I often say we need to assess our land and see what land we have available in Bastrop proper that we could use for, as councilmember Foster stated, infill and diversity. Because we're going to need, we're going to need housing that's diverse, and it doesn't always look like a, you know, a large flat house or two-story house. Because we are getting a younger population, I'd like to see opportunities for that younger population that's living here, that 30, 25, I would say, to 40 age group. And where do they fit in? Because everybody should have an opportunity to live in a downtown area here in Bastrop, but we don't have a lot of room to put anything new in this downtown area. So I know that we really need to keep, do what we can to keep Bastrop proper as historic as possible, and looking at those spaces and determining what won't fit in those spaces, not just what could fit, but what won't fit in certain spaces of Bastrop. I think that talking to the residents is very crucial. We have a very opinionated group of residents here who are very clear on what they want to see Bastrop be in 20 years. And I often tell those residents, you have to look at both sides of it. We would love to keep our city the way that it's been, but that's not realistic because it's growing and times have changed and needs have changed. We need to be accommodating to that while at the same time keeping the essence of Bastrop. So that's what I would really like to focus on, is taking a look at these historical areas in Bastrop and listening to the residents and determining, yep, no, Kroger can't go on that lot across the street. That's going to take away the character. But also figuring out, okay, then where can Kroger go? These are the areas where our different businesses, and I'm just throwing Kroger out there. But I just think that's very, very important because the reality is, there's going to be more people here, and we need to figure out where those parcels of lands are, exist right now that we can develop on to provide needs for those people, but keep the people that are generational here, that same feel that we've grown up with our entire lives as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett.
I think it's important that we, obviously, we have to recognize that the growth is coming. As long as property rights exist in Texas and as long as there is a space outside the city limits where people can build, they will build. So the question is then, from a financial standpoint, if we want to participate and benefit from the growth and not be burdened by it, by overly burdened by it, because the thing is, our infrastructure is going to be taxed whether they're in the city limits or not. Okay? So we can participate and they can participate in our tax base if we give them a city that they want to join. If we give them a city that welcomes them and offers amenities that they can't get outside the city limits. The thing is, if we don't do that, we lose the tax base that pays for the infrastructure that the group, that the new people that are coming in are overtaxing. So in my opinion, we have a choice. We either become a bigger city with a larger city limits, with an expanded area, or we hunker down and we become a donut hole around the development which will come. And then we have to pay, at that point, we and the ratepayers will have to pay for all of the burdens that come with that. But again, they will get none of the increased tax base that comes with it.
Thank you, sir. I think from some perspective, location, location, location is vitally important. All 10-acre lots are not created equally. All 20-acre lots are not created equally. Where we put some of this growth, which is here and will continue to be here, is vitally important. Our comprehensive plan was adopted in 2016 based on what we knew then. Our B3 codes were adopted in 2019 based on what we thought we knew then. And now we're looking at reviewing our comprehensive plan. It needs to be reconciled with our old comprehensive plan as well as with the B3 codes and as well with the anticipated growth that we have. So I come back to location, location, location. The Gateway Project is a perfect example. It was a great project. It was just a poor, poor location chosen for that project. I think that we can benefit to councilmember Plunkett's point, we can, that we need to benefit from that growth. We need to be able to grow our city limits. That's going to entail us as part of our comprehensive plan lobbying our state government to allow us to manage that growth a little bit better by expanding our city limits so that we can accomplish some of that new growth and our citizens can benefit from it. To the point of maintaining what Bastrop is, that's our central core. It's extraordinarily important that we maintain our downtown area, but at the same time recognizing that growth out in the suburban areas is coming. It's going to be there. We can't overburden what we already have. And then we just had a discussion about infrastructure. We've got to ensure that our infrastructure is in place. And so how do I envision Bastrop in 20 years? Hopefully, having a better partner in TechDOT and being able to expand our transportation infrastructure in such a way that allows appropriate ingress and egress into and out of our city as well as the surrounding area. So that's, did I talk too fast?
No, that's great.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yeah, I think that the road discussion is so important for this. So, you know, a little financial calculation, if you take roughly $12,000 and grow it at 5% per year for 20 years, it's $32,000. Well, it turns out that you can do that same math with people. And so we're looking at a population in that timeframe of 32,000 with a growth of 5% per year. And you know what I contemplate is boulevards. Like, how are you going to move people around in that space? You know, where are the, you know, six-lane or eight-lane wide, 40 mile-an-hour roads that'll move people four or five miles, but still with commercial retail on both sides? And where would you even put something like that? I mean, we have space to grow directly to the north. Like, if you just follow Main Street to North Main and just keep going north, you run into Excess Ranch, and there's room for growth up there. Potentially, I've heard numbers like 40,000 people could live up there. But, you know, you'd need to have Main Street turned into a boulevard. You'd need bigger Highway 95. You would need grocery stores up there. You would need, you know, you just, the kinds of infrastructure. You know, I got the little iPad here, and I was like, okay, well, 32,000, well, how big is that? Well, that's the city of Nacogdoches. So the city of Nacogdoches has got 32,000 people in it. And so then I was looking, I'm like, okay, well, what kind of infrastructure do they have in Nacogdoches? Well, they have a loop around it, you know? They've got state highways and business roads that run through it. They've got a Super Walmart on the far north boundary of the city limits, a Kroger in the middle. And so, you know, those are the kinds of things that we would certainly need to support a population with 5% growth for 20 years. And I think going to some of the points that councilperson Lee said is that, you know, kind of identifying where those places will be, where you can have those population centers where people are going to live, where they can have that grocery store close to them. And it would almost be a, you know, this is going to be a new population growth area of our city, and it's going to have infrastructure that is there with it, or not just infrastructure, but stores and the places that you need to shop in order to function and exist, that those things would be close by. And then there would be the ability to move that traffic, you know, through the highways to Austin for certain people who have to go to work or, but even at 32,000, you know, do you want to be a 32,000-bedroom community to Austin? Or do you want to have, you know, your own, you know, workplaces here? So, you know, I didn't know what this exercise was going to be like today, but you get asked a question like this, and you got to say something. And, you know, 32,000 people, it's a lot of people. You know, how are you going to move them around? Where are they going to get their groceries? What kind of health care will they need? What kind of cemeteries will they need? Yeah.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, mayor. So I have a couple of questions regarding the surveys. What kind of responses are we getting? Are we getting a lot of people that are taking the surveys percentage-wise? I guess this is the city manager.
And so we've had one week of survey out so far, and we've gotten a little over 180 responses so far. We just launched our second week yesterday. And so I'm not clear on how many numbers we've gotten just yet. And I believe it's close to 25 for one day. So it's, in terms of where we stand, we're happy with those numbers. We've been getting mostly good, positive responses. Positive Positive being, um, constructive and helpful in terms of, um, how people are perceiving growth and development in Bastrop.
That's not a lot, though. What, what would you need, what type of response would you need from the public to have, um, I, you know, at least a good portion, if not 10% of responses from the city to be able to really make, may have, make an impact on this, the, what you're gonna be bringing back to us? 180 is not.
It's not a high number in terms of what your total population is, but, um, I don't know that I can give you the answer that you want specifically because for us, we're not typically looking at percentages of population. We're looking at the quality over the quantity of what we're receiving. Um, not to give any, like, specific examples, but we've had other surveys, just depending on the city, that they might have one survey out for an entire month and they're not receiving that much. So, um, we think that's a strong response. Um, again, I don't feel that I can answer that specifically, but Ilda, if you have something that you wanna add?
I think you covered it correctly. I mean, we, uh... With community online surveys, you know, those are, those are meant to really help, uh, inform the public and, and try to gather as much feedback. If you're looking for more of a statistically valid survey, that typically requires a different type of survey that, uh, that would get that percentage that you, that you may want from the community, so.
How, how can we accomplish that? Because I feel like, um, we do our forums, we do our workshops, the same people end up coming and we're not getting a good percentage of what people really think, but we see it all on social media, um, every day. What can, how can we do a better job of reaching the, the community and getting some surveys done throughout this process? Cause we're gonna have some workshops, we're gonna have more council discussion. What else can we do?
So, all of the boards and commissions, number one, can share it. That's the first thing. It can be a topic of discussion on all of the boards and commissions. Having the school also share it on, uh, their forum. I mean, our social media has a great deal of reach. What, what you end up seeing is people, you know, nobody likes to take a survey, they just don't like it. You might get 1,400 responses the way you want, but of those, how many, how many were quality responses? And, you know, I'm, I'm burned on a number because I keep hearing, oh, we had 1,000 people who, you know, they reviewed the B3 code and it was great, everybody thought it was good. But now that we're, like, in it, I have those same 1,000 people going, oh man, I didn't know that's what it was. So, I'm all about quality also. We'll push it out as much as we can with everybody and everywhere that we can. But it's not just the survey. I, I want the survey to drive people to Planning Commission. Like, I, my goal is to have to have a meeting at the convention center, not here, because we have such a draw of people who wanna talk about it. That's my goal. Whether or not 1,400 people take the survey, I, I really want good, good, solid answers.
So, um, the other question that I had, going back to P&amp;Z, was we were supposed to have a, um, joint workshop and actually I think the, the phase mentions tonight is being the joint. It says, who's involved? City Council Visioning Workshop and Joint P&amp;Z Meeting. I don't know if that was supposed to happen tonight, or they're just saying that's gonna, that's gonna happen. But I don't see a joint meeting scheduled.
You, we don't have one on the schedule. We've not, um, isolated a date for P&amp;Z. We've tried a couple of dates. There was a couple of dates where the commissioners had conflict and/or there were other meetings scheduled. So we've not scheduled a joint council P&amp;Z date at this time.
So we're looking at March the 4th for a community open house. So we still have a wide range of time here to fill in some forum type.
We do. Um, you have three joint meetings on the deck right now. You have a Visit Bastrop, hopefully if they can get their contract done. You have an EDC and you have a P&amp;Z. Those, those are three. And so, um, I know that November, December are typically quiet months where we don't have meetings, but I've, I've told all the staff, we're, we've got work to do. And so we're, we're trying to work at the chairs to make sure that the meetings can happen, but there's a lot of heavy lifting between now and late spring.
So P&amp;Z is scheduled for 11/21. That's just with P&amp;Z?
Yes, correct.
Right? And then, so we would have December, January, February before we have our joint.
And you have a, a joint with, uh, EDC on December 3rd, so one, one day's already out. You'll have a joint with Visit Bastrop, that, another day's already out, and then you have Christmas. So we're, we're trying hard to fill the date, but, you know, I'll work with the P&amp;Z chair and staff to get a date quicker on the calendar.
What's the next step for us in half, a- after this workshop, our discussion that we're having today? Will we see you, um, anytime before, I guess the next date here is, uh, November the 4th? That's the next community survey. City Council Visioning, so then stakeholder listening sessions. What does the stakeholder listening session consist of?
Those will be, um, a group, uh, well, there'll be several groups of stakeholders here in the community that might be focused on a certain area of expertise. And the city staff is, um, putting together those groups of people. Some of them might be focused towards development, some of them might be focused towards HOAs and neighborhoods, some of them might represent, um, parks and open space. And so we're meeting with several different groups that have different areas of expertise within the city. And so, um, once we have those identified, we'll be developing, um, the format for that, but we'll be coming to Bastrop and we'll be meeting with them for roughly an hour with each group to really get their perspective on, um, how development and growth has been going in the city of Bastrop and, um, how to take that forward.
And are we planning any, like, I know we're probably gonna, you wanna do like a forum at the convention center, what have you. Are we planning any small focus groups?
Yes. That's what she just mentioned. So, HOAs.
No, 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 I mean a residence.
Yes, there is a resident focus group.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And sorry for that confusion on the, the joint P&amp;Z on that line. Yes, those are two separate items.
I just, I just wanna clarify, um, so there, the joint P&amp;Z meeting with council was actually separated out and we just may not have removed that from our portion of the presentation, but the workshops are essentially the same. We would be asking them to, to sort of go through this exercise as well. And so we felt like it would be better to have that conversation with you independent of them and them to have that conversation, um, independent of, of council. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, quickly, I just wanted to remind us and the public as well of a super, super, in my opinion, critical point. Is, we, we don't build anything. Except streets and wastewater power, power plants and, uh, water treatment plants. We build stuff like that. We build sewer lines, we build streets and we build wastewater. Some entrepreneur, some entity with money is going to build the Kroger. And they're gonna decide where to put the Kro-. Um, so if, if we try to micromanage growth to a certain point, then, then we get central planning and, you know, that doesn't work out so well, you know, in, in history. So, just remember, I've, I've had many, many, uh, people come to me and say, why do y'all build this here? Why do y'all build that there? We didn't build anything, okay? A- again, except the services that that, uh, particular customer might need, you know, to get there. We are not gonna build an HEB. We're not gonna build a Costco. We're not gonna build a Target. We don't have, you know, cities don't do that. Okay? So, it's really important to understand that the people who own the land are in control of, you know, to a large extent of what goes on that land.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Just some, just, I'm gonna give you a little constructive criticism on the survey. I can't tell you how many people called me and said, what does this even mean? I don't have a comprehensive plan, which is not that big. Did we meet the goals? I don't know. I don't, I don't work for the city. I'm not on council like you are. Did we meet? It's too complicated. We need it in plain English, really. I- if you want people to respond. So, the low turnout, uh, probably is a lot because people just ignored it because they didn't really understand. So that, I'm just, so in the future, we know how to, how to improve that, please. Just, just for us.
Yes, thank you.
But also I want the public to know that neck, your next opportunity, next Wednesday, okay, that's the day before Halloween, so you can remember that, 5 o'clock, right here, special planning and zoning workshop on exactly what we're talking about. So that's your next opportunity. You need to tell everyone you know. I want it to be so big, like Sylvia said, we gotta go across the street, cause this is your time to have input. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fossler.
Uh, Bastrop in the next 20 years, um, we haven't mentioned our natural environment. Like, we love our natural environment, it's beautiful, there's a lot of, um, geographic diversity and quirks and, like, beauties here that, um, I think some of the previous future land use map wasn't, uh, we just need to be super aware of our, um, our terrain and how, um, how precious it is to it, is our, is our, which is natural resources, is our, is our terrain. And so, I think we're all gonna be on board with reducing our impervious cover restrictions to, to, like, be able to control flooding, like flooding is for flood-prone conscious society as well. I'm not sure how that, um, the responses came back for flood, that was one of the questions on the Week 1 survey. Um, but yeah, reducing the impervious cover would also, like, help us protect that part. Um, but yeah, natural environment, we just hadn't said that yet. We talked about, like, land use, but like, we are big recre- outdoor recreators and, and, and we love our pine trees a lot.
Thank you.
Obviously, the diversity of our, of our community is, is, is a vital part of our thought process. Uh, we'd love to be in a position like the Woodlands has over the past 30 or 40 years where they develop a town center and villages with ingress and, and access to individual villages with their shopping facilities and their mini marts and schools that are in that general area. We're, we're, we're certainly not there and we certainly don't have the influx, influx of funds. But there is one way to look at it, with our town center, which is extraordinarily unique and our growth is gonna occur on the, on the outer fringes. And I'd like to consider that and that falls right in the lines with the, with the natural habitat that we have here. We're a bird city, we're a tree city, we're a film-friendly city, we're a music-friendly city. All of those things have to be encompassed in, in, in where we're going to be in 20 years, cause that's what's gonna drive our, our growth, that and available housing.
So, I might take that opportunity, um, to move a few questions forward. Um, I know this is kind of a lot of reading, but way, basically what we're asking, um, now that you have this idea of what your ideal Bastrop is in 20 years, what are the priority areas for future investment? Are there specific areas within the city limits or the ETJ where you'd like to focus that so that you can reach that ideal Bastrop?
Well, I'm glad somebody's light went on. Councilmember Lee.
Well, thank you, mayor. I think it goes back to what the mayor said, location, location, location. Um, as Councilmember Fossler pointed out, we, um, we love our pine trees, we love our nature. Um, and, you know, that all has changed in my 53 years of life. Um, so we expect that, but that goes back to my question of identifying where that, where can we put what? Where are, where do we want our residents to be concentrated? Where do we want our businesses to be concentrated? So I think that understanding what we have available is, is what we need before we can kinda decide what should go where and what the future land, uh, use map. Identifying those areas that we don't wanna disturb because of the natural. Um, but then also identifying areas where we can build, um, to provide more housing and residence. So it goes back to location, location, location for me.
Councilmember Meyer.
Absolutely critical is, uh, our trees and, and, and dark skies and, and things, critical things. Super critical to me are the people. They are our roots. They are our, our valued trees here. So I don't feel where there is infrastructure that does not warrant high density and we're talking in, in town. I'm not talking about outside and new developments where we can have the infrastructure, where, where we do. I mean, that's happening right now. But we've gotta protect, uh, the area that has been here, that is the town and the people that are here. And if it doesn't make sense because of upzoning and what we've seen in the planning and zoning last meeting and what we're gonna look at tonight, if we upzone areas, and I'm talking commercial development and, and not neighborhoods and, uh, mixed use, where it does not fit and especially where the infrastructure is not there, it won't work. It just will not work. So, while we look to develop in the right areas, as the mayor has said, location, we also look to preserve what we have and the quality of life for the people that are here.
100%, I, I certainly appreciate those comments. We're, we're jumping around on some of our questions here because y'all are fast forwarding to all the great stuff we wanna touch on. Uh, so I really appreciate that. So what you're looking at up here i- is, is really a discussion map. This isn't a map that will make its way into the plan, this is a map for discussion for today. And what we did in preparation for today is we looked at your community and those development patterns. Where is that happening? So each of these little color-coded sections of town sort of represent where there is a particular type of activity or a node, whether that's primarily residential or commercial or if that's primarily downtown or if it's maybe more conservation because of the, the Houston toad, um, or maybe river-oriented. And so that started to just kind of visualize where, where is it sort of happening organically or through time, through your, your code development and, uh, the plans that have already, you know, the, the projects that are already on the ground. And so, wanted to fast forward to this discussion, uh, slide, just so you can sort of see, like, you might already sort of understand where some of this, this breakout is. And this map may, may make more sense to, to us, um, but I'm hoping that you all can sort of see maybe where, where some of that, um, why we sort of broke it out into these colors. If some of these make sense to you, Tahitian Village is all that yellow residential. Um, there's, uh, also a, a ton of residential that's popping out on the western edge and then your sort of commercial and retail that's happening in that red area. And of course, you're downtown. So, um, I'm gonna leave that up there for you all to, to think about for a minute and, and provide some comments and say, you know what, this is, this makes sense or it makes more sense to have more blue or green on whatever, uh, whatever area here. But this, um, really does also sort of help us understand where you may wanna see that, that growth that you're talking about, Councilmember Lee. You know, is, are there the right places for some of this growth to happen? Cause it may not be, it may not want to happen downtown because there isn't the infrastructure for that. So, you know, as Sylvia pointed out before, you know, right now, the, the current comprehensive plan that you all are under is a little incongruent with sort of your, your zoning. And so we're trying to get those right-sized for each other so they support one another moving forward. So I'm gonna, I don't know if you wanna, yeah, absolutely.
So, the red is commercial, correct? I'm, I'm going, I'm pulling out my planner, like cobwebs. So, yellow residential, just, just to give council some bearings, right? Yellow residential, red, commercial, purple, industry?
Yes, mhm.
Wow, yay me, yay me. Um, orange is an intense mixed use kind of, sort of?
That one is really just more residential. Uh, you know, it, it really isn't, there's no intensity related to any of these, um, in terms of housing or land use. It's really, we know that there's a lot of single-family development that is happening in that western edge, right? Meeting, meeting some of that demand over there, so.
So, what I would say is, in your green areas, those are your Houston toad, those are your conservation areas. And I'm assuming your blues are going to be your water-oriented development areas where we've got flood or flood control issues, we've got Gill's Branch and things running through. My, my personal opinion, which today maybe a dollar might get you a cup of coffee at McDonald's, is we have a lot more water-oriented areas than are shown on the map because of Atlas 14 and because of the flooding that we are prone to. So, some of that red probably needs to transition to, um, yellow and, and, yellow and blue make green, uh, you know, something like that. But in truly, I mean, think about what I just said. Yellow and blue make green. When you have a flood area, what do you need? You need green space to be able to take some of that water. We have some areas there that are marked red that have no business on God's green earth being red. We just can't sustain it. I mean, I handed them a hundred million dollar, uh, drainage bill before Sylvia, um, that investing a hundred million wouldn't even save one additional home in that area. And so those are the kinds of super discussions. I love it from a, from a graphical perspective, but I gotta work with your GIS folks to, to take some of the, the built environment that I can't change anymore. Like, I can't change that we have a, a super compact school in the middle of downtown that is about 100% impervious cover. Um, but, but we can change the areas where we've purchased property and we're trying to get to a more regional approach to, um, drainage, so.
And the ma- the map that you're looking at, you know, for illustrative purposes primarily, right, and for discussion, is really just to, to highlight what we see as outsiders looking in, right? And so you all live here, know the- And so you all live here, know this community best and are going to be able to tell us, this isn't Bastrop to look like in 20 years, right? So what, what's it going to look like? So that's what we need to hear from you today is we need more green in some of these areas or we need more blue or we need, and you can also see there are all these circles also on here. And what those identify is, you know, whether that's current open space that's available there or we see that there's a lot of educational facilities in a particular area or there are a lot of employment facilities in a particular area or a lot of big box retail or that local dining and entertainment. And so in addition to the colors that are underneath, underneath those circles, on top of that, we know that there are these other things there. Is that what you want in, for Bastrop in 20 years?
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So understand, we didn't get this yesterday. I'm told it was delivered by Friday, but we didn't get it over the weekend and it was delivered to us yesterday. So we weren't really sure what questions you were going to ask or how this presentation was going to go. So I understand what you're asking. I, I think it needs to be a bigger discussion. My hope was that this was going to be done as a workshop so that we could have time to look over the presentation compared to what we currently have as our 2016 plan to be able to come back to you with some ideas. So I, while I certain, and I think just saying the red is this, the red is that, I'm looking at the rest of the agenda like, okay, we still have a lot more items to discuss on our agenda. So is there a way that we can schedule maybe the next council meeting to give us time to review and come back with questions?
Yes, Councilmember, but, but also this is like homework for you. Take it home, process it, think about it, talk to your constituents about it.
Well, I understand, but she's asking for input now and I, I need time to really look at it.
Yeah, she's not taking, let me, let me just tell you, she's not taking what you're saying tonight and going and grafting it onto anything.
Oh, I understand. What I'm saying is I want to be able to give you some answers that you're looking for. And in order to do that, I need to review what you've sent us and compare it to what we've been using so that I can come back and have a healthy conversation.
And you know, like Sylvia mentioned, you know, it is, you all are welcome to take this information, digest it a little bit, send questions to staff if we need to do a conference call with a couple of council members and you know, you don't have quorum to have a discussion about it. We're, we're happy to do that. But you know, these questions are here for you all. These are, these are the ones that we just asked that you consider. We do, in the, we do in this process really want you to think about what was proposed or what was adopted in 2016 for those goals and whether or not those goals are, are, if you feel like the city is meeting them. And if you are not, what needs to be changed in them?
See, we don't even have those questions. We didn't get, we didn't even get those questions to help us. So yeah, if we could get those questions, maybe two council meetings from now, give us time to have some conversations with you, review. I think that would work best, in my opinion.
Thank you. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So just to piggyback on that, there's absolutely no way I'm going to look at that map and tell you, I, I just see some highways and I see HEB. I don't, so what I'm going to ask you is please send us a much more detailed, I need a lot more information on this map than what I see, other than just an HEB and some highways. I, I need to know exactly what I'm looking at because I put a lot of thought and I drive around and look at everything, but I need to make sure that this map is going to reflect what I'm going around and driving and seeing and my input to you is exactly the way I see it. So I'm going to ask you for a more detailed map. I'm going to ask you for much more time than, than on the fly like this so I, I can really think about it and have input. And then however you want us to get that back to you, if it's through email input, however you want that, but I just need a lot more to go by before I can give you an answer.
Sounds great.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Fossler.
For our stakeholder groups, if those aren't all the way defined yet, I would encourage one of the stakeholders groups to be the Bastrop County, the Master Naturalists and the Master Gardeners and the Audubon. They are super familiar with our natural environment and have been taking studies and do all kinds of citizen science projects all over. And I think they would be a great stakeholder meaning to engage. Yes, when you revised this map for the P and Z workshop, I would recommend putting a legend on it because I didn't know what the colors were. So that was confusing to me to think about. The 2016 plan, when I was reviewing it in chapter two, they talked about five different scenarios of possible growth, growth patterns, and there were five different maps. And that was super helpful to refer to when considering our future land use map because back in 2016, when there were five ones presented, I'm not sure what the discussion was there, but we can kind of see how we have chosen or not chosen, how we have grown according to those. And that was just helpful to the conference. I want more time reviewing that 2016 plan because it was really robust and they had 28, they had 28 steering committee members and it was a very thorough process. So I want to make sure that I do study the foundation of this update and give them due respect because they put a lot of time and effort in that. But those five ways, those five, yeah, patterns of growth that they talked about in 2016, those were, those were interesting to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I don't want to throw a bunch of ifs at you, so I won't. But should there be additional bridges built across Colorado, that's going to certainly change the growth pattern of our city? Is, is that something that's going to be taken into consideration for a comprehensive plan or is that something we're just going to wait and see what the powers to be when they put in bridges?
This particular scope is just focused on land use and growth, not specifically transportation. And so that would typically be covered under transportation.
I, I understand that, but the land use is going to change based upon the, the access to different parts of town. If you don't have to travel 71, you can get around that. And I just, I, I realize that's an impossible task, but I know that somewhere in our thinking, we need to, we need to put that into some of our thought process because the, the access across the Colorado here in Bastrop is extraordinarily limited and that can't be maintained or till for another 20 years, so, which will definitely change our growth patterns. I know that was an if, but I put it in the should, so thank you. Council, any more questions? Do y'all have some additional questions in our, oh, there's a bunch of them.
So Mayor, what I'll do is I will work with half and we will get some Zoom meetings with each of you and you know, we can discuss some of this in advance and I'd also probably nestle you in some of the stakeholder groups also.
That'd be outstanding, outstanding. I have no lights on, so it's, you have the floor.
Okay, so yes, we'll, we'll come back to that discussion, but just to remind you of what the next steps are moving forward, in addition to that additional discussion that will get set up, and we'll be meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and our stakeholder groups in November, on November 21st. And then we'll be continuing with our background information and gathering and move all of that as we get that input into starting to develop those recommendations, which will go to you and city staff and the public in future engagement efforts and for review as we move forward in developing that.
I notice you have both the P and Z and stakeholder listing groups on November 21st.
Yes.
Both the same day?
Yes, sir. We'll be coming to Bastrop, so we'll just be making that the most efficient trip possible.
I love it. I like the idea. Thank you. Council, any more questions for staff or for presenters? Thank y'all so much.
All right, thank you.
We really appreciate it. Council, we're into two hours thus far. Does anybody need a bio break?
Yes.
I have no one scheduled to speak on this. No. Let's take a five minute bio break. Be back at 7:35. All right, we have a quorum at, at the, at the dice. We'll move on to item six, citizen comments. I currently have two citizen comments. One is from Sarah Mellett, who's at 798 Sam Houston Drive, apartment 511 in Bastrop. She has her concerns relative to seeing dead cats and dogs on the side of the road. I don't believe she's here, so it's, I will turn this over to our staff and not read it out. She says she supports. I have no idea what she supports, so. And then next we have Larry White, who wishes to speak on an item Riverside Grove Development. If you'll, if we come, come to the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
State your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Larry White. I live at 206 Schaefer Boulevard, Riverside Grove. The reason I'm here is because I've been in nursing homes and hospitals for eight months this year with a leg that broke three times, the same femur, one sash. It's been tough, but that's my problem. But I come home to find a letter and a postcard from a developer wanting to develop 1.2 acres on the east side of the road going in, put in a shopping center on the bottom and apartments on top. That's dumb. We got one road going in, they're building another school back in there. It can't support the thing. And I don't waste everybody's time. I mainly came because I didn't know where else to go. Thank you. And I would give y'all one recommendation. Do y'all record this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Does each one of you go home and listen to it? I don't believe you because if you did, you wouldn't talk so much. Thank you. I mean, because you go down one time, you go down this time, plus three minutes. We get three minutes, you get three minutes. If you can't sit there and write down something and answer in three minutes, you better get another job.
Thank you, sir. That's all the citizen comments we have. We will move to the consent agenda. Is there anybody at the dice that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is anybody? Councilmember Fossler? We will move seven C to an item for individual consideration. Any other removal from the dice? Anybody from the audience wish to move an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none indicated, Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda exclusive of item seven C.
Consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council meeting minutes, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, regular meeting, and Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, regular meeting. Seven B, consider an act on resolution number R 2024-131, approving the closure of Chestnut Street for the Lost Pines Christmas Parade, providing for a repealing clause and providing for an effective date. Seven D, consider an act on resolution number R 2024-151, awarding a community support service agreement for services associated with operating, marketing and providing cultural art to the Lost Pines Art Center at a cost of $167,950 attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Nine E, consider an act on resolution number R 2024-152, awarding a community support service agreement for operating, marketing and staffing, a historical museum and visitor center and providing visitor center services to the Bastrop County Historical Society at a cost of $362,732 attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Seven F, consider an act on second reading of ordinance number 2024-34 regarding the City of Bastrop's Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS, benefits, authorizing, one, 20-year retirement eligibility, two, non-retroactive repeating colas for retirees and their beneficiaries under TMRS Act, Section 853.404F and F-1, three, annually accruing updated service credits and transfer updated service credits, and four, authorizing actuarial determined by, determined city contribution rate payment. Nine G, consider an act on resolution number R 2024-135, approving an engineering professional services contract with Dial Development Service, LTD, DDS, to provide construction inspection services for the Agnes Street Extension Project to a not to exceed amount of $108,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting.
We have, we, the city secretary has laid out the consent agenda. I'll obtain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. Second, I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll immediately move to item seven C, consider an act on resolution number R-2024-150, awarding a community support service agreement for associated with operating, marketing and providing cultural art and theater services to the Bastrop Opera House at a cost of $194,000 attached to exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Councilmember Fossler.
I'm just curious about the amount, 194, and the community asset funding from our budget. I know we're giving y'all 324,000. I couldn't remember what that 130,000 delta is and I just wanted to call it out for people who are following along at home and the charts don't match.
We have a, we are granting them or giving them support for the renovations and so that was, it's a, it's X number, over X number of years. So that's the difference.
So we'll see that every year for however many years?
Yes, and I can't remember how much, how many it is, but I, I know that that, maybe 10, I can't remember, but we're giving them.
It's $1 billion.
Okay, so divided by 130. Okay, awesome. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fossler, a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move, I'm going to, at the, at the request of a couple of people, I am looking to move items eight R and eight S up. Prior to doing so, I need to ask legal staff, there's on eight R, there was a update and because this is called for a public hearing and a chance for citizens to review the material, there was also a map missing. And I just want to make sure the way we advertise that, we are not, and then carrying this out, we're not in violation of Texas Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for the record, I spoke with your staff, Kennedy Higgins, on this to confirm, but the proper notices were issued out with the correct address information for the property describing the rezoning was properly posted in the agenda description as well. The only changes in the packet were updating some of the staff report supporting materials that had some outdated information in them. And so those have been updated in the agenda packet for the public viewing as well, but Council is perfectly capable to proceed with consideration in the public hearing on this.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that we weren't advertising something that our citizens weren't able to review prior to conducting a public hearing. Appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Higgins? No, I'm sorry, let me read the, read the two items. I'm so sorry. Item eight R is conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-38, approving the zoning change for two plus, two plus or minus acres of building block, 1110 east of Water Street, located east of State Highway 95 within the city of Bastrop, P5 corridor, P3 residential, as shown in attachment to, providing for findings of fact, providing for repeater. as shown in attachment two, providing for findings of fact, providing for repeater, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing for proper notice and meeting, and establishing an effective date. Now, Ms. Higgins?
Good evening, mayor and council. First off, I just want to say I'm so sorry for that error. Essentially, what had happened with the staff report is, was left out from, left in from a previous staff report referencing the Valverde zoning concept scheme that was brought to you last time as a, as a zoning concept scheme. So that's the information that was mistaken. The, the notice that was posted, mailed, as well as posted in the paper, was accurate in the depiction of the property. It was just that one error in the staff report. And the missing information, processes have changed in regards to how municipal code is handled, and somehow, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but the staff report was replaced with, or sorry, the ordinance was replaced with the staff report instead, and so it appeared that there was two staff reports instead of the ordinance. That's what was updated in. But without further ado, this is the zoning concept scheme we have in front of you tonight. It is for the property located at the corner of 95 and Spring Street, right here. It's, okay, there, it's working. This is the property that is currently being requested for, for a down zone. They are currently zoned P-5 commercial, and they are requesting to go down to P-3 residential. This property has been in this family's, in this family for generations, as has been previously brought up in this meeting. The property is currently zoned as P-5, which calls for high commercial use. They're wanting to keep it as more of a residential, so they can keep it as their family home and farm. The future man, future land use map does call for it as neighborhood commercial, but as we have already discovered today, that future land use map isn't always accurate, isn't, doesn't always depict what we as a city want to see in those areas. It is adjacent to rural residential, though. So notification was sent out to, to, to the 20 property owners surrounding, within 300 feet of the lot. We have received four responses in favor. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Higgins? Councilmember Lee?
I just have a question, I think, for the city manager for understanding. So this, this lot is a vacant lot. Doesn't have a house on it or anything, right? Because there's two properties. One, one has a house on it.
Correct.
Right?
No.
Neither one of them have a house. So my question then is, well, one of the addresses is 1105 or 1101?
The property surrounds the one house is at the top. It's going to be the second agenda item.
Okay, that's what, so that's what I was saying. So one of them has a house and one doesn't. My question is, how does this happen? So that, a property owner owns that land, and at the time of the upzone, were they contacted? Did we, did the city contact them and let them know it was going to be? I know you're going to say it's before, so yeah.
No, no, no. I'm going to, I'm going to tell you exactly, because this strikes to the heart of the people who say, thousands of people showed up, and this is what happened. You advertised for a massive change in your zoning map. That's how it happened. You had a public notice, an advertisement, and a map, and a zoning change. You had a public hearing at planning and zoning, and you had a public hearing at city council. The residents did receive notice if it was a vacant lot. They may or may not, I mean, where do you post notice for a vacant lot? So there are some processes that we have changed, which includes making sure that the sign is there, making sure that folks understand it's absolutely posted. One of your items is where we're posting things. Sometimes it was posted in the Bastrop Advertiser, sometimes it was posted in the Statesman. Being consistent, so folks know they can go to the Elgin Courier the way the county does, and you can go look at things. And then we've got to be better about when we're going to affect people's property like that. Like, I, I don't care. We may have to build another glass box out there that shows, hey, big circle, we're thinking about doing something on your property right here. Because if folks aren't paying attention?
Oh, and that's the problem. But then, do we contact them direct? Do we have a process where we, is that required of us, or we just don't do it, or is that something we can implement? Because if I have, if I own land and I live in Virginia,
Correct.
I don't know that you're upzoning my land. I'm in Virginia, so if you don't reach out to me directly.
Correct. Our requirement is a certified mail. That's our requirement. And the requirement used to be certified mail of a smaller area. Legally, we only have to do within 200 feet. We've chosen to go to 500 feet, and that's really, so for properties like this, like your neighbors know you, they're going to say, hey, did you know they're doing this to your property, et cetera? But you're going to be surprised. We have a heck of a lot of properties, especially in this area, that did not realize they were going to be zoned commercial, and that, that flies in the face of conservation in some of these areas, so.
So are we looking at something, a different way to do it to make sure?
The Elgin Courier, and just making sure that we call out attention. I mean, we can comment on the agenda as much as possible, but.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, so just going back, thank you for referencing what we were speaking about earlier. So I'm, I'm going to reference y'all in the future from now on, because you're going to be our case of where people did not, they have no idea what's going on, not to your fault, because most people don't, because we don't know to look at everything all the time, and not to say that we don't give enough notice, as, as our city manager said. So I hate it that you're our case study, but I'm going to reference y'all from now on when we start doing our future land use.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes, a question. The fact that it's zoned P-5 doesn't obligate you to use it that way or to change how you're using it to that way. So what is the negative impact of it being zoned this way? That's something that's not clear to me.
It's a tax implication.
Okay. Because it could be used that way.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is that it? Councilmember Foster?
This is less property specific, but when we do a zone change, are all the maps, is there like a series of maps that get updated? Like the future land use map, would that, isn't that by parcel? If it messes up like a commercial corner?
I'm glad you asked that, because in the process, our codes, our ordinance amendments should also say, and amending the future land use map.
Okay, so does this one say that? And is that the only map that we need to amend as well?
Well, the existing zoning map and
Existing zoning and future land use.
And the future land use.
Move to approve.
Second.
A little bit premature there, y'all. We're, we have a public hearing scheduled, and if, if y'all have no other questions for staff, I will declare this public hearing open at 7:56. Madam City Secretary, do you have anybody to speak on this subject?
No, sir, we do not.
I will declare this public hearing closed at 7:56. I will now entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item eight S. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-39, approving the zoning change for 2.20 plus or minus acres at a building block, 111, east of Walter Street, located east of Highway 95 within the city of Bastrop, from a P-4 mix to a P-3 residential, as shown in attachment two, providing for findings of fact, providing for repeater, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing for proper notice and meeting, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, mayor. So as we stated, this is essentially very similar. They are downzoning it from P-4 to P-5 for the exact same reason.
P-3.
P-3, I'm so sorry, from P-4 to P-3. And the future land use map does show this area as rural residential, so it is correlated with the future land use map. Notification was sent out to the 23 surrounding property owners within 300 feet, 300 feet. Five responses were received in favor. One response was received in opposition. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Ms. Higgins? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Foster?
If we were to approve this one so quickly, do we need to make an amendment in the motion to approve the future land use also? So the motion needs to include that? Okay. Move to approve and to also update the future land.
Again, a little bit premature, but hold, hold that thought. Do you have any other comment? See your light is on. All right, then we will hold a public hearing, open it up at 7:58 on this item. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Then this makes it very easy. We'll close this at 7:58, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
I have a question, mayor.
Nope.
The amendment needs not add it. Is my microphone, Kerry's amendment was not added to the motion, the piece.
Excellent point. Could you amend your motion to include, can you amend that motion?
Motion to approve with Councilmember Foster's amendment.
What was the amendment? I want to clarify.
To amend, to update the future land, land use map as well.
And zoning map.
And zoning.
The, the future land use map and the zoning map are separate.
And the zoning map.
But changing the zoning does.
Zoning map's automatic. It's the future land.
No, we're good.
All right, the, the, the person who made the motion has agreed to that change. Is this a second?
Yes.
Agree. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move back to the top of page four of items of individual consideration. First item is consider an act on the resolution number R-2024-145, appointment to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation in place is 246 for a two-year term beginning in October of 2024 and ending September of 2026, making an appointment to place seven for a one-year term beginning in October 2024 and ending in September of 2025. These are the mayor's appointments receiving confirmation by the city council of appointees and providing for an effective date. Council, I've submitted for appointments for your consideration. Three names. Well, one is a reappointment, two are appointments. The reappointment is Councilmember Lee, and the two appointments are TJ Flynn and Gary Blake. I would ask for your consideration and confirmation of those appointees. Councilmember Foster?
Just for clarification, the Chris McCool's term begins in October 2024. Is that right? See the note at the bottom and ends in September 2025?
Yes, correct.
McCool, McCool is a one-year term beginning in Oc-
Okay, beginning now.
Yeah, beginning in October 24.
Okay.
And ending in 25, yes.
Okay, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
By Councilmember Foster, a second by Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Clarification, mayor. Did you not want to place anybody to place seven?
Chris McCool.
Place seven is Chris McCool.
Okay.
The document that we have doesn't have that on there, so don't worry.
We were dealing with a lot of lists. Okay, so it's in place two is Gary Blake, place four is Councilmember Lee, place six is TJ Flynn, and place seven is Chris McCool.
Yes, TJ Flynn.
Okay.
Okay. Clarity?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to double check. We got all the names there. Thank you.
Have, have a motion by Councilmember Foster, a second by Councilmember Lee. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the next one I'm pulling up, and I'm sorry, I'm doing these in my order, is the bridging Bastrop. Could we put that slide up there? I believe you had it down at. Say again? It is B? Okay. I must have read that wrong. There we are. I have appointing Cedric Williams to place one, Nancy Wood is a reappointment to place two, Carolyn Holt, who is a resident of, of our housing authority, at place three, and Karen Knight in place four. We interviewed a couple of these, a couple of these folks. I thought they interviewed quite well. I present, I present these for y'all's consideration.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Foster. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
We'll move on to item eight C. Consider an act on resolution number 2024-139, appointing construction standards board of adjustment and appeals for place one contractor, place four general contractor for a three-year term beginning in October 24 and ending September 27. Appointing place three, citizen large and alternate one business industry for a one-year unexpired term ending in September of 2025, receiving confirmation by the city council of appointees, providing for an effective date. Move to approve.
Second.
The two appointees that I've, and I appreciate if you hold my two appointees on, on that, are Jimmy Crouch and Derek Klinky. I, I want to, I want to point out that, that this was a very, very tough one to do, because I received several phone calls asking why I would have appointed somebody who was instrumental in, in seeking my recall. And my point of doing so was that I've extended an olive branch in, in the hopes of, of it would be reciprocated in some way, shape, or form, just as I did when I appointed two former opponents to the mayor's position. I appointed them to, to boards after, after taking office, and I'm hoping that this will be another indicator of our willingness to, to extend hands across the aisle and move forward in a productive manner. I present these two appointees for your consideration. We'll entertain a motion again.
Move to approve again.
I have motion with Councilmember Foster.
Second.
I have a second, was it Mayor Protem? Oh, from, and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilman Foster?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item eight D. Consider an act on resolution number 2024-142, appointing to Cultural Arts Commission for places one and two. Bastrop Independent School District represented to a three-year term beginning in October of 2024 and ending September of 2027. Place seven, Historical Society Museum and Visitor Center will remain vacant until a new director has been hired. That's why that is still open. We're appointing as part of this a designated Mayor Protem Kirkland as the council liaison to this board. I have we have Lisa Holcomb has, has reapplied, and I'm really stoked that she's agreed to join in. Jerry G. Cordova has, is a representative from the, from the school district, and once again, our museum slot is still open. I will entertain a motion to accept these appointees.
Move to approve.
I have Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Councilmember Foster?
You have lots of people rolling off in 2025 just to, for future planning.
Thank you, and we'll probably be handling these, these appointments a little bit different than, than various resolutions such as this. All right, I have a, I have a motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. No further discussion is indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
We will move on to item 8E. Receiving nomination for Bastroff Mayor for appointment to cemetery. Advisory Board for Places 3 and 4, receiving confirmation from the City Council for appointees to a three-year term beginning in October and ending in September. Prior to that, this is not a nomination process. I realize nomination runs throughout these presentations, but this is, as y'all well know, this is not a nomination process. And I'm suggesting that if it says so in our resolutions, that we change the resolutions to reflect it appropriately. I have my appointees in this are Darren Kestles as a reappointment to Place 3 and then Carol Reynolds as an appointment in Place 4. I will entertain a motion to confirm these two.
Move to approve.
I have an appointment from, I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. Seeing no discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 8F. Consider an Act on Resolution Number R-2024-146, Appointing Membership to Ethics Commission in Places 2, 4, and 5 for a full three-year terms of office beginning in October 2024 and ending in September of 2027. Accepting the resignation of Honorable Chris Dugan in Place 5, whose term expires in 2026, and appointing citizens to fill the unexpired term, receiving confirmation by the City Council, appointees on said commission providing for an effective date. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, Mayor, I request that we vote individually for each place type on this board.
I'm considering, is there a reason why we're going to vote on each one?
Yes, because I don't want to do a collective vote on all the places together as we have the other ones. I want to do individual vote on the place types on this one because there are some concerns and questions that I have. So I'd like to vote individually.
Well, it's inconsiderate. Let me ask our legal staff. Is that, can we break this up from what it's read out in the preamble?
Yes, certainly. If council members would like to essentially split the question into individual nominations, I think you can do so.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then we will consider an act on Place 2. Carol Spencer, I would ask for your consideration and confirmation of Ms. Spencer.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Madam City, any further questions, discussion? Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
No.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
No.
Councilmember Plunkett?
No.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Okay, motion to accept Ms. Spencer on the Ethics Commission has failed. Three to two dissenting votes were Mayor Protem Kirkland, Councilmember Plunkett, and Councilmember Meyer. We will move on to seek a motion on Bishop Dan Williams as six alternate, or alternate Place 6. I would request your confirmation of Bishop Williams.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the role on this individual?
Bishop? I didn't get the last name, sir.
Bishop Dan Williams.
Bishop Dan Williams? Okay, so that's for Place 6. So it's Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
I'm pausing because on this document it says Place 3. So is it Place?
It's alternate.
Is he an alternate or is he in a place on this document?
No, he is the alternate.
Okay, yes.
On Place?
He's the alternate.
And what place is that, please?
There's no place. He's an alternate.
Okay. Okay, for the alternate position. And that's what you have, Bishop Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we're at the, we have a motion and then we're calling roll.
Right, and so it's still with Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay. Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. This appointee has been confirmed. We will move to Place 3. Jill Helm Camp. I will entertain a motion to confirm this appointment.
Move to approve.
Do you have a motion from Councilmember Fosser?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, on this item. We have two of the three appointments on this have been confirmed with Carol Spencer being carved out, I will say. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We need to vote, one more vote. We have a reappointment of Sumail Akhemi to Place 4.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We are leaving open the slot that was filled by the illustrious Chris Dugan until I find an appropriate jurist or lawyer to recommend for y'alls confirmation. We will move on to.
Mayor, did you want to request or ask for nominations for the Place 2 at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am. This is not, again, this is not a nomination process. This is an appointment process that I see confirmation.
Yes, and the charter says you nominate and, or your point.
It says I point, thank you.
Your point, but they have to confirm.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. No nominations or there's no mechanism for nomination in our charter process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to item 8G. Consider an Act on Resolution Number R-2024-137, Appointing to the Historic Landmark Commission for County Historical Society Representative for Place 1, Appointment of an owner of commercial historical structure to Place 3, Change the term date. Planning and zoning commission representative in place, just reading the preamble, to coincide with his term of office, receiving confirmation from City Council for appointees for a three-year term beginning in October of 2024 and ending in September of 2027. And we'll be appointing Councilmember Meyer as the council liaison. Council, we have two people. One's a reappointment and one's a new appointment to Place 1. I'm asking for your confirmation on Samuel Bennett. He was part of our interview process. And I'm asking for your confirmation of the reappointment of Susan Long.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9H. Consider an Act on Resolution Number R-2024-149, Receiving nominations of the Bastroff Housing Authority Board for Places 2, 4, and 5 for a full two-year terms of office beginning in October 2024 and ending in September of 2026. Appointing City Manager, Civic Correio Trevino as staff liaison, it says council liaison. May we change that to staff liaison? And to said board, receiving confirmation by the City Council, appointees of said commission, providing for an effective date. Council, because of the rules and regulations that dictate how the housing authority has to run that come from not only the state, but also from the feds through the urban, housing, urban development, we take recommendations from that group of who to appoint. I've taken their recommendations on there and they have provided me the recommendations of Eva Ballard, I'm sorry, Christina Campbell, Mary Butler, and Amy, again, I apologize. For Christina Campbell, Amy Turner, and ETGA resident Chase Anderson. Those are the three appointments. I have a question from Mayor Protem Kirkland.
So this is a question for legal. So as Mayor mentioned, the, I'm not even sure what it is, you know, local government code or Texas law on this matter clearly states that the chair of that organization is supposed to name the individuals, and they have. So I have no concern with that part. In our code of ordinances, it specifies some requirements for these individuals that, you know, one has to live in the housing complex that is under their control. The rest either need to be city residents or one may live in the ETGA but must live within five miles of the city limits. That's what our ordinances say. So I guess my question for you is simply, do our ordinances have any weight to them in this? Or is it because the state law gives that freedom to the chair, we should just repeal our ordinance and not have it anymore? We're all having trouble. Madam City Manager, we're struggling with three of these to turn them on today for some reason.
Councilmember, it's a good question. In general, what I would say is where there's concerns about state law preemption, if a state law and a local ordinance or charter provision can be read congruently, then that's how courts would treat them. So here, from a factual analysis, it sounds like we've got a slate of recommended candidates for this underneath the state law provisions. And in our local provisions, we are satisfying those as well with the current slate of applicants.
Well, no, my concern is that if, I looked at Mary Butler's address and she also lives outside of the city limits in the ETGA, right at like 4.8, 4.9 miles, which, so it's still fit. But that took up the ETGA slot, which meant that Chase Anderson couldn't fit as an ETGA resident according to those rules. But I'm not sure we've enforced or used those rules. I just was going through every board and trying to understand, you know, let's make sure we conform to the rules. And this one, I, you know, wrote down what our ordinances said. And then the mayor pointed out that state law has something to say about it as well. And I didn't know that, so I went and read it. And it was exactly as he said it was. And so I just, you know, I was just looking for some direction on, is it? For instance, let's say for just a moment, assert that Mary Butler is the ETGA resident and Chase Anderson can't be appointed as a second ETGA resident if we're going to follow that ordinance. What would, what should be? I mean, can we just give him a pass and say, hey, you need to follow this next year? Or what would be the most appropriate action to take?
Sure. So first, I can, if you would like, we can look closer at the state law preemption of the ordinances overall in this area. But in terms of the current issue, since the limit on the number of ETGA appointees is from the local ordinances, our local ordinances also allow for the mayor to waive a residency requirement on showing of good cause. Good cause is at the discretion then in the first instance of the mayor and then also of the council upon their confirmation. And so to your question of, is there a mechanism for y'all to say, hey, there's an issue here and we'll look to address it in the coming year? I think that would legally be your mechanism currently.
Okay, I'll buy that. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you know, and I took into consideration this came from the Board of the Housing Authority and they were very well thought out in their presentation. And I would like to honor that. Do you have additional question, Mayor Protem?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. Appreciate the conversation. We'll move on to item 8I. Consider an Act on Resolution Number R-2024-14A, Appointing to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation Board for Places 4 and 6 for a full three-year term of office beginning in October of 2024 and ending in September of 2027. Appointing Councilmember Fosser as council representative, not liaison, because it's an appointment, not as a liaison. For said board, receiving confirmation with the City Council, appointees of said board and providing for an effective date. Council, I received no applications for appointment to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation. It's, I'm up for reappointment. I would like for us, I'd like for y'all to consider that reappointment as a resident, certainly not as mayor. And then Councilmember Fosser would be the representative of the council on that. I'm still going to work to recruit people from the Hunter's Crossing area, 525 homes. Hopefully, we can find someone that will serve. With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser, a second from Councilmember Lee. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Kirk? Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 8J. Consider an Act on Resolution Number R-2024-140, Receiving nomination of Bastroff Mayor for appointment to Bastroff Library Board for Places 5 and 7, Receiving confirmation from the City Council, appointees for a three-year term beginning in October of 2024 and ending in September of 2027. Reappointing Councilmember Lee as the council liaison, providing for an effective date. Council, we have, I have two people that have placed before y'all. Laura Godwin and Megan Webb. I believe that's the correct ones. Yes. I will say again.
We have, it's Rachel.
You have, it's Rachel. Is that, I see, I don't see Laura Godwin.
Bonnie?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. I had David Byrne in there, and this has been a transitional time. I had David Byrne, who withdrew his application, and now I have Rachel Kabinus and Megan Webb, uh, placed before y'all for your confirmation.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Uh, Councilmember Fosler, you have a question?
I just have a question. So Laura Goodwin did not reapply. She, her, her time, her term expired. Okay.
She did not reapply. That is correct. I have a motion, I have a, from Councilmember Lee, a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. No further questions or comments. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Kirk, Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
I appreciate y'all sharing microphones. Uh, move to item eight K. Considering actual resolution number two zero two four dash one four three, appoint the Main Street Advisory Board for Places one, six, and nine for a three-year term beginning in October twenty twenty-four and ending September twenty twenty-seven. Fill the unexpired term of Place two to expire in September of twenty twenty-six, receiving confirmation by City Council on appointing Councilmember Plunkett as the council liaison. Council, in this, again, we have, uh, utilized the recommendations from our, uh, Main Street Board for Place one. They have asked for Joseph Feminella for Place two, Jamie Howard for Place six, Heather Lyons, and for Place nine, Lindsay Cana. There was a question relative to, uh, uh, Lindsay Cana being eligible based upon, uh, consequenti or nepotism. We got clearance from staff that it was, uh, that she is more than welcome to serve on this, uh, board. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to give that to Councilmember Meyer, second to Mr. Kirkland. Councilmember Fosler?
This is a hard-working board. That's all I'm saying. Good luck, y'all.
Thank you so much. We have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. No further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Council will move on to item eight L. Considering actual resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one four one, receiving nominations from the Bashrop Mayor for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board for Places one, four, uh, the Bashrop State Park Representative in Place seven, to a three-year term beginning in October of twenty twenty-four and ending September of twenty twenty-seven, receiving confirmation with the City Council and providing for effective date. Council, these are all three reappointments that I have placed in, uh, the Parks Board. Uh, let me get to my right area. Uh, as you know, that one of the representatives on there is the representative from, uh, Bashrop State Park, and that's Nathaniel Gold, and he has really stepped up to the plate. He's going to be really interesting to work with. And then Rick Rivera and Stephen Fulbert have, uh, have agreed to be reappointed. With that being said, I respectfully request your confirmation.
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a, I have a motion from, uh, Councilmember Fosler, and a second from Councilmember Meyer, seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
I'm, I am moving to, pardon, thanks to council, that, that motion has passed unanimously. Uh, I'm moving to P and Z. I made a mistake on P and Z. I had attempted to go with complete, uh, residents and come to find out in further reading that the impact fee represented needed to be a resident of the county, uh, or the ETJ. I contacted, uh, Mr. Estes, who I was, uh, presenting for Place ten, and informed him of my mistake. I have a call in to Nancy Ravensburg to, uh, ask her to, uh, if she would fill that position. She did interview with us last week. I have not been able to reach her, but I anticipate that I will still be able to get a hold of her, uh, and, uh, I think she will be happy to serve in that position. That being said, I am presenting Christopher Toth as, uh, for Place one, uh, reappointment of Keith Auburn to Place three, uh, Scott Robichaud to Place five, Joshua Bingum, uh, Bingaman as a reappointment on Place seven, and then for the Place ten, the impact fee board, Nancy Ravensburg. And I will entertain a motion toward confirmation.
Mayor, a question?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Robichaud is, uh, not a city resident. His house is located in the ETJ.
When I first looked at his application, he said, uh, resident, and, and then we looked further, and he was not. Uh, Mr. Robichaud has been a faithful representative on our ZBA and wants to contribute more. I'm asking, uh, for y'all's consideration to waive the residency requirements if it will cause his commitment to serve the city.
Would you consider swapping him with Jeffrey Estes? That way, we've got the person in the county, and it's this list here.
Mr. Estes is not, not presenting, Mr. Estes forward. He, I removed him, and Nancy Ravensburg is going in there because I caught that, that residency in the ETJ after I had already put Mr. Estes' name forward. I contacted Mr. Estes, explained to him where I had made my mistake. He was, uh, he was very receptive to that, thanking me for calling him. I did tell him that if should an opening come forward, he would be given first, uh, first consideration. So it's Nancy Ravensburg that is in that Place ten, and she is a, a resident of the ETJ.
I, uh, I struggle with this one a little bit, and it has nothing to do with the names of the individuals. Um, it has to do with our charter stating that the members of planning and zoning have to be residents. And, uh, and, and we received a legal opinion that, that it could be someone in the ETJ. There's a few, you know, loops to that, but that was the ultimate conclusion. And I disagree, uh, that that's what it says. Um, I, I, the charter starts out in one point oh at the top and says that the individuals living in this area are declaring themselves a city, uh, and then later it uses the phrase residence, uh, to describe who are allowed to serve on planning and zoning. So I personally feel like we have a directive from our, uh, residents that these people must be residents, um, and that I'm not allowed to violate that. In fact, violating the charter is grounds for dismissal from council. So I, I just, I, I, that, that's where I stand, is I, I, I struggle with it because of that.
Well, I-
And it's a, it's an honest position. I mean, it's, yeah.
I, I disagree. I think we have some leeway on this. Uh, however, if you wish to, uh, to make a motion to confirm these exclusive of Mr. Robichaud, I, I will be happy to entertain that.
Well, then, I'll make a motion that we-
So for the people at home can understand, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
Can I type in the proper name for the ETJ resident?
Scott Robichaud?
No, it's not. It's Nancy. Nancy?
Nancy Ravensburg. R A B E N B U R G.
The S?
R E, R A B E N S B U R G. Councilmember Fosler?
I'd also like to weigh in on this residency. I feel pretty firmly about the residency requirements as well for the nine spots on P and Z. Uh, to waive one, like, I would be more, um, inclined to waive the residency requirement if they were, um, an attorney, architect, city planner, design professional, landscape architect, real estate developer, civil engineer, construction project manager, or construction superintendent. I know he has construction experience, but I don't know if he has, if that's has been his job. So I would be more inclined to waive it if the ETJ person had one of those, but, um, I feel, I feel strongly about the, um, residency requirement for P and Z as well.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. I did, uh, would, prior to-
So, Mayor, I'm not sure I got a motion out, or that we got a second?
Sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, that's, can I ask for the motion again?
Yeah. So motion to approve the list with the exception of Mr. Robichaud, who lives in the ETJ.
Second?
I have a, I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland, and a second from Councilmember Fosler.
To approve the list as presented on the screen, not as was presented in the packet.
The one, to approve the list on the, on the screen exclusive of Craig Scott Robichaud.
That is correct.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. So just to add to that, um, not just this board, but other ones where, um, there may be vacancies still. We have so many extremely qualified applications to consider, so we do have a wealth of, um, applicants that we can choose from, so it's not like we don't have other choices. I just want people to know that.
Thank you. We, we have a mo, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make, um, just a comment about the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, one of the things about the, having these boards and commissions is we want diverse perspectives from people in our community. And I think this board appointment is the first one that has happened since that rule of being an architect or engineer or whatever the stipulations were, were put on planning and zoning. And if you look at this list, it's primarily male, and we have one female, and it's not representative of the different parts of the communities. And prior councils, that was kind of the staple of making sure that people that served on these boards represented the north side of town, the south, the, you know, the west, the east, that there was representation from every part of our city on the boards so that every part was represented. We're looking at a board here now that's primarily male. Um, it's not diverse amongst the city, and I want the council to think about that. Most, most people in the positions that you guys put in place for planning and zoning, and I say you guys because I wasn't for that, are male-dominated roles. So are we going to proceed in the future with only males on planning and zoning, with no opportunities for females, no opportunities for people on the north side of town that are people of color, no opportunities for people on the south side of town, no opportunities for Hispanics who might not hold those titles? I just want, um, us to consider that, um, going forward, and maybe when we look at revising our rules or procedures again, or our charter, we keep that in mind.
And I, I appreciate that, and, and some of that is, is, uh, is on me, is making the appointments. The appointments come from the applications that we receive, and, and I would love to, to, to do an outreach program to some of the underserved, uh, communities, especially ones who, who have, uh, who have some of the skill sets, not only for planning and zoning, but for other boards and commissions. So thank you for that. Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Councilmember Lee, um, I actually concur that having a diverse body along all sorts of different, uh, metrics is, is a, is a better choice, and the requirements for development professionals is for three of the places only. Uh, and so the other six, uh, and it's not named places, you know, it's just three of the, the nine, and the other six don't have that requirement. Um, so I, I think that there's still, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to, to fill in as appropriate in, in future appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm glad you brought that up because I was looking at, I was looking at the description, and I, I don't think it was on here, but there's two places where, um, one references, um, doesn't reference the three. There's two sections in the ordinance. One doesn't reference the three at all, um, for planning and zoning. That's what it was. It was for planning and zoning qualifications. It doesn't reference the three. It says shall have X, Y, Z land use experience, blah, 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 blah. Then there's another section that references the B three code, and it does state three. John Q Citizen, who might want to be on P and Z, will read the qualifications and say, oh, I don't have that. I don't have that. I don't have that. Can we change that? Does council have to approve that language change?
We will bring it back at your very next council meeting because, as Legal and I discussed, it's a shall, and then it's a may. So this board shall have these disciplines that may include. So, so what does the shall really mean if nothing? Because it's may?
Words matter, though, yeah.
No, I know. And, but, so, and then what do you define an interest? I, I watch, you know, Antiques Roadshow. That does not make me a historian.
And I'm a Google queen, but that doesn't mean I can build a house.
So, Madam City Manager?
So, yes, if we can change that, I think.
I'll bring it at the next agenda.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager, um, I also spent quite a bit of time today trying to find the B three code, and when I say that, I literally mean try to find the B three code. Um, if you go to our website and look for it, I, I was at like ten, twelve, fifteen minutes before I found it.
Mayor Protem Kirkland, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the things, one of the roles our city secretary was filling is codifying that code in Muni code. So you don't have to look anywhere, and everything on the website points back to Muni code.
Anyway, stick out. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all in agreement that we need to diversify our boards and commissions and make it easier for people to, to, to apply. Uh, so thank you, Councilmember Lee, for bringing that up. Do you have any other comments, questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the last one, both, uh, both in my list. Oh, I'm sorry, we're, I, I thought we had. Please forgive me. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirk, uh, from Mayor Protem Kirkland, and a second from Councilmember Fosler, seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
The, uh, the listing, sir, so everybody, uh, at home can know what's going on?
The listing is, as, as is prescribed on, on the board there with the exclusion of Craig Scott Robichaud has been, uh, removed.
Okay.
And that Nancy Ravensburg has taken the place of Jeffrey Estes on the Place ten.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Count, Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. We will move on to the last one as it comes alphabetically. Considering actual resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one three eight, appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment for Places two, four, and seven for a three-year term beginning in October twenty twenty-four and ending in September of twenty twenty-seven. Appointing members to an unexpired term through twenty-five for Places one and three, receiving confirmation from City Council of appointees and providing for an effective date. Uh, I will tell you that I found out just today, uh, actually yesterday, that we had two members who had resigned from the, from the Board of, uh, of Adjustments and, uh, or the ZBA, yeah, the Board of, uh, Adjustment, and then, uh, I only have one person who is, who has applied for this, and that's Mr. David Cruz. And so I am asking for your confirmation of Mr. Cruz to that board.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor, uh, from Councilmember Fosler. I have a question from Councilmember Fosler.
Did Mr. Robichaud resign from ZBA in order to be appointed to P and Z?
No.
Okay, separate matters?
He, he, he asked to, uh, not be reappointed to ZBA. He wanted, he felt that he, uh, could, uh, provide more assistance to the city on P and Z. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further questions?
Is this board functional? I mean, can they meet quorum?
They meet about once a quarter, only when, only when required.
But can they meet quorum with three?
Nope. No way they can meet, there's no way they can be, there's only, there's only two people on it now. That would be Doc Jackson and, and if y'all except Mr. Cruz, uh, it'd be two, two people on there.
And they alternate one, David Lowen?
Both he, both he and Mr. Auburn had submitted their resignation.
Oh, got it.
I found out about this, uh, through the, through the, uh, report.
Okay, my apologies. I just saw it on the screen.
Again, I have a motion to, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Plunkett.
I don't remember.
Councilmember Plunkett. I think a second was Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Correct.
No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, I will, I will tell y'all that for next year's appointments, uh, there will be a much easier and thoughtful process, uh, for, for this presentation. Uh, but we got through it, so congratulations. We will move on to item eight O. Considering actual ordinance number two zero two four dash three six, admitting to twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget following existing statutes- statutory requirements detailing appropriations contained herein as Exhibit A, repeating all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, establishing effective date and publication. Ms. McElwain.
It's me again. This is a, these are budget amendments that are just kind of cleaning up our budget for the end of the year. We didn't make entry, budget entries throughout the year like we used to. And so we are doing this to be in compliance with state and state law and the governmental standards. Our financial management policy states that the level of budgetary control is at the fund level in all funds. And so when budget amendments are required between funds or between departments over $25,000, they must be approved by council. There are 18 of these. If you have any questions, stop me. The first one is the city manager's expenditures. They were, we transfer, we were transferring money from departments for assistant city manager and the assistant to the city manager where they were originally budgeted from fire and development services. These are going to be reflected in entries 2 and 12. This is budget amendment 2. This amendment is needed to move the former fire chief's salary from where it was originally budgeted to the city manager's department. It also transfers some of the unused budgeted funds to cover over-budget legal services in the organization department, which you'll see in the next amendment. Budget amendment number 3, this is an amendment to cover over-budget legal services. Number 4 is a budget amendment needed to increase operational salaries and professional services to cover over-budgeted items in the engineering department. These will be funded by unused budgeted amounts from public works and interest revenue from proposed budget amendment number 10. Budget amendment number 5 is an amendment to reallocate unused funds to cover over-budgeted items for organizational and engineering expenses. Organizational is the, or the legal fees. Engineering was budget amendment number 4. Budget amendment number 6 is an amendment to reallocate unused funds to cover budgeted items for organizational expenses, which is the legal expenditures. Number 7 are library expenditures. This budget amendment is also covering the unused funds covering legal fees. Budget amendment number 8 is for community engagement expenditures. We purchased barricades for community events. This item is going to be funded through unused fund balance. It's for $21,200. Budget amendment number 9 is the, is a budget amendment for municipal court expenditures. This is to increase personnel expenditures related to a longtime employee retiring. This increase is funded by municipal court fines that we collected that were more than we had budgeted. Budget amendment number 10 is the revenue, this is the revenue from interest income and municipal court fines to cover, the interest income is noted on there twice, but we're only using it once, to cover the two items that were previously discussed. Budget amendment number 11 is for land acquisitions. This is going to be funded through available fund balance. This is for a purchase of a property on MLK and a purchase for a property on Farm Street. Budget amendment number 12 is from Dev Services. This is the transfer to city manager department for the salaries. The Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund Department or Fund is, this is an amendment to increase special projects for the Bird Project, and it is offset by $40,000 donation that was received. Budget amendment number 15 and 16, those are the, that is for the Fairview Cemetery. The revenues are directly related to the burial expenditures. We buried quite a few more people than we anticipated in 2024. And then finally, Hunter's Crossing. It is a $5,000 budget amendment to cover overages in legal services with some additional interest income. And that is all. As if that's not.
Councilmember Fossler.
Hi. I need more time with this agenda item. I know this is more commonplace for you guys. You've done this before. This is my first one. And I know you used to do it on a monthly basis, and this is like a whole year's worth at one time. Is that?
Probably not a year's worth.
Not a year.
But it, these are some amendments of just, some of them are probably six or eight months' worth. Some of them didn't happen until the, like the land acquisitions didn't happen until later in the year. So, and those were used monies that have just been collected in that fund at some point. I didn't go back and look where, how long they've been there, but.
Is there a time, like at the beginning of our next meeting, where we could ask more questions, bring it back, table it tonight, and ask more questions about it? I'm just, I just have more questions. It's moving stuff around on the budget that I just, I need more time with this one. Just wanted to let you all know.
Councilmember Fossler, if you want to send the questions in advance, or if you want to have a meeting with Edie, or whatever you want to do, we can certainly bring it back. But if you have some questions, the rest of the council probably has some questions. It would be helpful to send those.
Yeah, I can sort of entertain a motion to table it.
I'd like to hear if other people have questions, so if it needs to be a one-on, or if it needs to be.
Understand, understand. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, I was going to ask that as well. My vote would have been no, but I would have just went with whatever council voted on. But I certainly think that we should table, only because I have concerns why we're over-budgeting so much, why we're having to move so much money around. I'm concerned about dipping into the fund balance to make up for some of the expenses. And I'm also, I'm also concerned about the, I know that there was some salary changes or position title changes under the city manager, but that's a lot of money that's changing. And I have some questions about that. So I would like to schedule some time with you. And in past, we've actually had a sit-down with the CFO as a councilbody to kind of go over these numbers. But yeah, just kind of looking at them and figuring it all out is not enough for me to say, oh, yeah, I'm comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable.
Sure. No, that's, that's fine.
Just to understand it better for me and my brain.
Well, so just to be clear, there, when we're over-budget in certain, in line items, you, in our report, in our final report.
I get it. I get what you're saying. But what I, my concern is if we're, if we're over-budget, Bonnie's sitting in front of me, so I'm going to say the library. That's great. I want to be over-budget in the library because something might come down the pipe and I might, I might need it. But I, but if it's going to be taken away from me and switched around because of other expenditures and things, that's where I have a concern. And I want to better understand why that's occurring.
And that's why I waited until the end of the year to do it because we, I don't want to use revenue, I don't want to change revenues in the middle of the year when we don't, when it's, you know, we don't know what our sales tax is going to be at the end of the year. So I'm not going to adjust it as we go. But for, as far as expenses go, the year is over. So the expenses have, I mean, they are what they are at this point. So I was moving unused funds to cover it so that we are in compliance. Anyway, but I will be happy to sit down with you and answer any questions.
Move to table. I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett to table.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fossler. Councilmember Lee, your light is still on.
Sorry, Mayor.
Seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll relative to tabling this item.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
It's been a long night and a long day. Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's, I'm going to change the agenda around a little bit. We have one of our volunteer citizens here to give a presentation, update of Bridging-Bassdrop board activities.
So you're skipping to the city manager's report?
I'm going to let Ms. Wood make her presentation so that she can get out of here.
It's under the city manager's report.
May, may I move her up city manager's table?
I'm just trying to find where she is in the report. That's it. Here you go. 9C.
It gets confusing when we're moving stuff.
Yeah, I was just trying, I was just trying to find where it was.
I'm in, I'm in agreement. Trying to take things into consideration.
I would have waited.
It's, I could see you dozing off.
You had a handout. Does the council have, said handout?
Yes. Mayor, Mayor, counsel, thank you so much. Nancy Wood, speaking on behalf of Bridging-Bassdrop, we felt as a board that it was time to give you all a report of things that we had accomplished so far this year. So that is what I have put on that piece of paper and handed you. And I'm just going to briefly go through it here. We wanted to be sure that you were updated on where we were so far in 2024. And during April, during the April board work plan session that we had, the, it was clear to our board that there were a lot of goals from other boards where we could be helpful. So one of our projects this year was to meet with some of those boards and see how we could help each other move some of their goals forward. We engaged with at least three other city boards and commissions to share ideas on how they can increase visibility and attract diverse members from all sectors of the population. They helped to raise awareness about the importance of representation, and we've already talked about that a little bit tonight, and inclusion across all civic bodies so that we have that opportunity for all stratas of our residents represented on boards and commissions. And then one of the goals was to begin meeting regularly with the city's human resources department, which we did, and which we do. Every meeting, we receive a report from the HR director, and we've customized it to reflect the areas that we think need some focus. That would be the department, the job title, the gender, ethnicity, internal and whether it's an internal or external candidate, the demographics of anyone who's been selected, and the candidate job posting source, where people can see what the city has to offer. So we've researched and suggested different sites or publications where we could put these ads. And then we are about to see upcoming on social media, something that is really going to be a lot of fun, I think, not only the posting of the positions, but also posting of some of the city's employees and why they love working at the city, and what are the benefits of working at the city. And we think that will engage more and more people, diverse people in applying for the positions at the city. And then our commitment to creating an inclusive and welcoming environment. We acknowledged that we needed training, so we have begun that process and had an opportunity to participate in a training focused on enhancing cultural awareness and understanding and starting the conversation. How do you start the conversation in a group like this? So it was very, very helpful to kind of get out on the table things that you think you can't say, but you really can when you're trying to really look at how communities come together in something like this. And then starting for next year, we're looking at, we've already met with the chamber, but we're going to look at how can we foster some of the training that some of the small businesses need. So we're beginning to meet with the boards that are interested in, that have that on, like the Main Street Board or BEDC, that have that on their goals as well. So that's what we're bringing to you today is our update for you.
We appreciate you. Councilmember Meyer?
Questions? Yes, thank you. So Ms. Wood, this totally ties into what we just said a while ago about the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Absolutely.
Your board could be so helpful in assistance on outreach for that. So I would love to see y'all work together and maybe implement something where we can.
We've had, we've had one meeting with P and Z, probably not long enough, and we need to work on it a little bit more. So we'll see what we can do to help with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wood? Thank you for your volunteerism and all the work that you do. There's no action on this item, council. We'll move back to the agenda on page 6. 8P, consider an act on first reading ordinance number 2024-35, amending Appendix A fee schedule, Section 81-12 libraries, establishing a repealing clause providing severability and providing an effective date. Ms. Pearson?
Well, good evening, everyone. Okay. It, I'm going to say, my staff is going home now, too, because it's 9 o'clock. So it's good that I'm out and about. So this is brought to you because since the non-resident fee was established in 2020, we get continual conversations about, do you have a discount for veterans? Do you have a discount for senior citizens? Do you have discounts for disabilities? So I took this to the library board after looking at some statistics, and they agreed that we should actually give a discount for these groups. The statistics, just super quick for you, are that the state averages for senior citizens and veterans, according to the census, the city, I mean, the county of Bassdrop is actually over the state average for senior citizens and for veterans. So that would probably explain why we get lots of questions about that. The second piece to this is that we are asking to add a family membership for non-residents. That is $40. Prior to the fee, a lot of our non-residents had multiple cards for their families. And we get that question now, too, like, hey, is there a way that I can get more books on my card? So this was just a goodwill gesture. They pay just a little bit more, and they would get an increased amount of books that they could check out. These would only apply to year memberships, and I guess that's it. Oh, so the, the other part of that is that the average for a discount for seniors and for veterans is about 10%. But this is $5 off of the year fee. It's actually more like 20%. So it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a, it is a significant discount. So my recommendation is that you approve this.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. And I so, I'm so happy that you've done this. And I'm going to ask to reach a little farther because reading and having access to that is critical. So is there any fund? I mean, like, I know on utility, we have a way where citizens can contribute to help with maybe people who are having trouble with utilities. But do we have any kind of fund or anything set up where people could contribute to maybe pay fees or just a thought, maybe to get something going like that? I just think it's so, there's so many families that are in need that aren't in the city that, and I know we're thinking this isn't that much, but it really is because when you think about food and everything. So I'm just thinking if we could get some kind of fund or grant, whatever it would be called, Ms. Pearson, but just to help.
There's been a lot of discussions so far. We don't have any really solid, any real solid plan. But yes, people are, people talk about this often, about how we can supplement the, the membership fee for the non-residents so that more people can afford.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
So Mayor, this is a question that starts with you and then goes to the rest of the room. I recall having a conversation with you that may have been even two years ago that had to do with a Texas library card, maybe an Elgin.
In Smithville. I've had the conversation. It was actually Ms. Pearson that pointed that out. I was going to ask her to explain what that process is.
Okay, yeah. And so, not fully knowing what it is, but given that there was that thing, and that if they went and got it, then they could check out books in our library, is there a possibility of us offering that thing? If you could explain that to us.
Okay, so what you're talking about is a tech share card. So because we are a accredited library with the state of Texas, we belong to the Texas. share program. That means that we can offer memberships for our members, so that they can go use other libraries. So, yes, as a citizen of Texas, you could get a library card at any other library, and then get a tech share card, and you can come and use your tech share card at our library, at the Bastrop Library. The limitations for the tech share card are that since you are not a member of our library, we only allow you to check out five physical items. So, five books, that's all we, we don't allow DVDs or CDs, and you don't have access to our eBooks or our audiobooks, or e-audiobooks. So it's only five physical books that they can check out. But yes, you can go to Smithville, you can get a tech share card, and then you can come and check out.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the benefit of that is they can go and purchase their library card at Smithville, I don't know what their pricing is.
Smithville doesn't have a fee.
And so, so a county resident could go down there, get a library card from the Smithville Library, and come and check out the five books, or a limitation of five books, and no cost at all.
No cost.
To them.
Except for whatever gas it takes them to get to Smithville.
Understood. But that is a, that is a discount program for those who are less fortunate.
It is a possibility, yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for alerting me to that last year. I really appreciate that. Counsel, Ms. Pearson has laid out this item, has asked for approval, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee, a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland, seeing no other discussion indicated. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion passes unanimously, we'll move to item 8Q. I don't think I've ever had an item 8Q. Consider an act on ordinance number 2024-37, amending Chapter 1 general provisions, Article 1.02 Administration, Section 1.02.003. Official newspaper posting notices in lieu of newspaper publication to declare the Elgin Courier as the official newspaper for required newspaper publications by the city, providing for findings of fact, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for proper notice and meaning, and establishing effective date. Madam City Secretary?
Yes, sir, thank you. The Code of Ordinance currently says that the Bastrop advertiser is our official newspaper, which, that is not a newspaper of general circulation, so that kind of eliminated it there. It was purchased by the Austin American Statesman. So, any notice that we put in, whether it's a P&amp;Z zoning request, public hearing, anything, would go to the Austin American Statesman, and the cost was really, really high. Because our ordinance says the advertiser, some of the departments were putting stuff in both, so that they wouldn't be in violation of the code. City Manager said, there were several things that she outlined that needed to be corrected, and this was one, and I researched. We don't have to necessarily have a official newspaper, but it's, it's good for us to have that official newspaper, so our citizens know where to go and look for any ads or anything that we put in. General law cities are required to do it on an annual basis. I checked with the Elgin Courier, and the county uses them as the official newspaper, and so does Smithville, and of course, Elgin does. So they're the only newspaper that I could find in the county, and we have already spoken with them. In fact, I ran an ad that was quite lengthy, and it was a quarter of the price that the Austin Statesman was. So, this is an effort to clean up some of the things in our Code of Ordinances, and then make it known that we will be putting stuff in the Elgin Courier, and so that our citizens can go and look there. They also have the online paper, and they're part of, I forget, it's Granite or something newspaper system, and so you can go online on that system and put in Bastrop and get the information. So, this is just the first reading, and then we'll go to the second reading, but we've already started using them, because it is an official, it is the only paper in the county.
Motion to approve and bring back on the second reading on the consent agenda.
Second.
Point of order, could I, could I also move to suspend the rules that call for a poll voting for the remainder of this meeting in the interest of time, and could we go to a voice vote? I believe that would be in order here.
I have a request from Councilmember Plunkett to do a voice vote as opposed to a roll call. You want to put that in a form of a motion, sir?
I thought I did, but yes, I would like to move that we suspend the rules for the remaining of this, remainder of this meeting, and by use of a yea-nay voice vote.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Mayor Protem Kirkland to move to a voice vote for the rest of this meeting, seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if I call the roll?
Hopefully for the last time.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Thank you, Counsel. That motion passes unanimously. We will now move to, we have a motion, I took a motion, maybe you forget, I believe it was Mr. Kirkland?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosler? Made the motion? Okay.
For the newspaper, second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, Counsel, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of this motion of, on 8Q, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I will remind you, we've already handled 8R and 8S, which puts us at the bottom of page six. Conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-4, adopt the 2025 schedule of uniform submittal dates for Platts in accordance with the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Section 2.3.004, annual adoption schedule of uniform submittal dates in the Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Section 1.2.002, uniform submittal dates, as shown in Exhibit A, and move to include on November 12th, 2024 consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Higgins, it is your, you're the floor show now, so.
Yes, sir. This item is an item that we bring to you each year, it is the adoption of our annual submittal dates for Platts. Previously, it was for all plans. House Bill 3167, sorry, 3699 removed that requirement of plans from the shot clock requirements, just leaving Platts. So currently, tonight, before you, we have different calendars of submittal dates. This one right here is the submittal dates for Platts requiring planning and zoning approval, which are preliminary Platts and final Platts. The next one is the Platts that are done at administrative level, which are amended Platts, minor Platts, and replats. Everything in italicized and bold is changed due to either a holiday or an alternate submittal date required. For example, on November 2nd, it is changed to the Tuesday instead of the Monday, because we have a holiday on November 1st. We accept submittals once a month on Mondays, and then they go to P&amp;Z on Thursdays, the last Thursday of the month, if they go to P&amp;Z. And so, this calendar is also updated to reflect the changes to November and December. Typically, P&amp;Z meetings are always the last Thursday of the month, except for November and December, they are moved one week prior due to Thanksgiving and Christmas, respectively. Any questions?
Any questions for our senior planner? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open our public hearing at 9:18. Madam City Secretary, do you have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
I will close this public hearing at 9:18, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt the uniform submittal dates.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
With a request to amend, to put on the consent agenda next time around.
I think that is in the motion, is it not?
Excellent.
That is part of the agenda.
Perfect. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, second from Mayor Protem Kirkland, seeing no further discussion indicated. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say none opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to 8U. Consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-153, approving a public improvement plan agreement with home communities for the Colony Mud 1D, Section 2B, as attached in Exhibit A, authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause, and establishing effective date. Ms. Higgins?
So as the mayor said, this is for the Colony 1D 2B. This is a part of a preliminary Platts submitted to us. This is the Public Improvement Plan Agreement, the financial backing, what will support the public improvements for this section of the colony. The Public Improvement Plan was approved on October, sorry, September 30th, and this is the financial agreement. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Higgins? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion to accept this.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee, a second from Councilmember Plunkett, seeing no further questions or discussion indicated. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Counsel. 8V, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-154, approving a public improvement plan agreement with home communities for the Colony Mud 1D, Section 2A, as attached in Exhibit A, authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause, and establishing effective date. Ms. Higgins?
This is the exact same thing, except for to a different section of the same section within the colony. The public improvement plan agreement, the financial backing.
I'll entertain a motion, I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Meyer, seeing no further discussion indicated. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, there are none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel, have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, thank you. I appreciate what you do on a daily basis. We will move to item nine, the city manager's report, which has been shortened because we've already addressed some of it. Madam City Manager?
Super short, hopefully, and so, personnel update, yes, the city secretary, this is actually her last meeting. Her contract ends 10/25. I will be bringing your revised contract, but Ms. Irma has plans to go overseas on vacation, so she will be joining us more than likely, short timeframe, remote. We have a lot of processes and a lot of cleanup that still needs to happen, so I will bring that to the council in the late November, early December timeframe. We do have ordinance updates regarding the P&amp;Z meeting that was mentioned. Again, for the folks out in the public who are still hanging on, P&amp;Z would have been on the 30th, on the 31st, I'm sorry, on Halloween, for obvious reasons, that's being moved to the 30th. We are addressing parking, onsite parking requirements, we're addressing density and drainage, we're addressing impervious cover and drainage, we're addressing accessory dwelling units and the number, which also goes back to densities, and then we're addressing tree preservation. The P&amp;Z has seen the memo, the council has seen the memo, we will post all of the proposed ordinance amendments with the agenda as it goes out, in red line.
I have a question from Councilmember Fosler.
Yes, ma'am. Just a reminder that that meeting starts at 5:00 PM instead of the usual 6:00, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. So, you're gonna bring her back on another contract?
Yes. The first contract was under my approved, my authorized expense, so it didn't have to come to council.
So then, that, that was the whole $50,000 that you paid her?
Yes.
Three months?
Yes.
And now you're gonna bring her back under a contract amount that we have to approve?
Correct.
Where are we on the search for a city secretary?
We have interviewed, I believe, six candidates, we have one more candidate to interview this week. We've not made any selection on who or if.
So you've interviewed six candidates. Is there a closing day on the?
No, it remains open.
And there's no, I pulled up the application, or the description today, there's no salary listed. What have we budgeted for the city secretary?
Well, we have a base salary budget, I believe, of $93,000 plus, add 30% to that for TMRS benefits, et cetera, medical benefits, et cetera, et cetera.
$93,000 and 30%, that's what's budgeted in. Okay, so, the last thing that I wanted to point out was, I was, went back and I was looking at the resolution, so on August 27th, the resolution that we, that was in our packet was changed, online, and I'm trying to figure out why. Because the resolution in our packet on August 27th stated we were swearing in the interim city secretary, and we voted on swearing her in as an interim city secretary. The meeting minutes also reflected that we, and when I say her, I'm referring to Irma Parker. The meeting minutes also stated that we swore her in as the interim city secretary, but the online resolution says city secretary. The language literally said interim city secretary. But what's now online, interim was removed, so either the documents were switched, or that was a mistake, or what happened?
I know that the documents were switched, I'll have to check with IT, but I, I do know that in all of the information we received from Legal back and forth, and also from the mayor's attorney, and all the attorneys in all of this, the language was interim city secretary or city secretary. So, there may have been some confusion, I don't know, I'll go check with IT on the versioning. Anytime anything is changed, Councilmember Lee, and for everybody else in the audience, we store on the server, nothing ever goes away. So if it was changed, it's easily retrievable.
Yeah, because it really doesn't matter what the attorneys were doing, our packet said interim city secretary, the meeting minutes said interim city secretary, the resolution initially said interim city secretary, what's online says city secretary.
I can answer that. During that meeting, if you listen to those minutes, I mean, to the actual meeting, when that was discussed, the city manager says, I would like it changed to city secretary. I did not do the minute, so I did not see that, but the resolution that was presented, or that was done, because she made that motion, or asked that it be changed, that's why it was that way, and...
We, I don't recall the ask, and it wasn't something we voted on.
You voted, she asked, and I will pull that section up, she did say, I would like that to be the city secretary, not interim.
And you got confirmation from council?
I'll have to go back and look.
Because we would've had to have voted on that, and there was no vote to change the language. Ask or not, we would've had to have voted to change the language, and I know we didn't vote to change the language.
We'll go back and take the video clip.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I have a recollection of a part of that meeting as well, and it was something that the mayor said, and it was sort of like welcoming you as no longer our interim, but actual city secretary. Just my recollection from that meeting.
We'll go back and compare the video to the minutes.
Easily done. Because I'd like for the record to truly reflect what occurred, so that works well. It works well. Any other comments or questions with the city manager?
Oh, I'm not done yet.
I didn't think so. I wanted to move on, please.
I didn't know if there was a point about the contract, other than, you're gonna see it again?
I, I want us to know when we're gonna have a permanent city secretary.
Well, you know more than me. The Boards and Commissions banquet on 10/24, staff will be diligently making phone calls tomorrow for all of the people you appointed today, hopefully they've cleared their calendar. Staff did prepare the, the program to include all of the prior, because the banquet is really to say goodbye to them and welcome, and so we will have an amendment on each of the tables that show the new folks. Council data requests, we did move that legal-centered draft legal policy, I don't know if each of you had that, or he just sent it to city staff, and so that's going to be on the November 12th meeting date. As we spoke about earlier, the comprehensive plan surveys continue. Also mentioned earlier, the joint meeting with the BEDC on December 3rd at 5:00 PM, and we're going to be discussing the sports complex feasibility study. BEDC will hear it on November the 18th, an initial draft, and then have an opportunity for the joint meeting on the 3rd. We are still awaiting the Vis a Bastrop contract to be signed and returned. I understand that they have a meeting on Friday. I had a concerned resident send an email that I will be visiting with, with Legal. Fairview Cemetery Colimbarium Project update, so this is, you heard about this...
So this is, you heard about this in the budget, that you, the general fund, will be loaning the Fairview Cemetery Fund about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, which is significantly less than the proposed fiscal impact was, and that's because staff did a lot of the work internally. And there is some lead time for purchasing, and we've got to go through a sole source for Austin architarium. And it is out for bid. The old iron bridge is what everybody's been asking for. We do expect one hundred percent plans due November eighteenth. Expected construction is sixteen months, and while we wanted it December of twenty five, it's looking more like December of twenty six. Even though design is a hundred percent, we've still got to put it out for bid. Completed Rules of Procedure is now on your desk. That that book that was green that had it bled in markups of red is now with a yellow cover, so please make sure you review that, make sure everything is correct. We do have some future items to P and Z and council. Staff has been doing some tremendous amount of heavy lifting. We have a community enrichment amendment, which will talk about park exactions, land or dollars for parks. L U E reservation, living unit equivalent reservation for wastewater as we begin to reach capacity in some areas. How do we put things aside? Impact fee amendments, you heard the presentation earlier tonight. Remember that the transportation impact fees take into effect in the beginning of the year, December, January timeframe. And we've already begun to hear the grumblings about that. We have Dia de los Muertos, which is November first. It's going to coincide with First Friday. It is in the empty parking lot space across from Pawpaw's. We are working with the school and some other folks for some pretty cool stuff in that. I did make mention to the art folks and everybody else that we're forty two percent Hispanic in this county, and not to have this ever have been an issue is really describes diversity and the need for paying attention of who's around us. And we did get the publication of all ordinance as required by law complete from twenty twenty two to current, which is what you heard Irma mention earlier about the Elgin Courier newspaper. So we took up a good portion of that newspaper. They hadn't been done. That's all I have.
Councilmember Lee.
Can we get a copy of that? Your city manager's report. That wasn't in our packet. Yeah, 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 the PowerPoint, and then, oh, so going back to the planning surveys. So I've been asked to ask if we can have, they, I think the public just wants to make sure we're not just relying on surveys, the public and planning and zoning, planning zoning members have have asked. They wanted, they don't want to just rely on the surveys. I know we're having some workshops. We're going to have our joint workshop. I I asked about a kind of a small citizen advisory group, which I'll send you an email on on what my ideas might be for that for consideration. But they want to make sure we were having some healthy workshops and not just relying on the surveys for input from citizens. So just wanted to give you that because it was asked of me to ask you, and I'll send you an email with some specifics of how we might accomplish that for consideration.
Sure.
Madam City Manager, could I, you could also direct me at some point in time by email would be fine, where I can get a copy of the city secretary job description.
It is posted online. It's an open job right now.
Good, thank you for that. And then also, as soon as as soon as possible, to get the council data request policy draft.
That would have come from the city attorney's office. I'll get Ben to send that out.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the city manager before we move on? Ms. Pearson is aching to go. We will move to nine B, presentation regarding Bassdrop Public Library's digitalization award.
Digitization award, yes. I don't know if anyone, if y'all are aware, but we have started digitizing some of our historical documents. They are stored on a server called Preservica. Everybody can access them. But before we did that, the Portal of Texas History got started through the University of North Texas. Every now and then, they've put out an award that you can apply for to have documents put on to the Portal of Texas History. We applied, we were awarded in-kind services totaling six hundred eighty two dollars and ten cents, and we will have preserved the Bassdrop County Cemetery records. Those are six volumes that were done by Audrey Morgan Roather, and they were done for the Bassdrop County Historical Commission. Those are used very regularly, and so it'll be a great value to our community to have those on the Portal of Texas History. We are also going to have digitized the Bassdrop County, let's see, let it go, Bassdrop Historical Buildings, which was prepared by the Bassdrop County Historical Commission, and also a survey of Texas history markers in Bassdrop County. And that was also prepared by the Bassdrop County Historical Commission. Those items have already been delivered to U N T. I don't know when we will get them back, but I assume it will be back within the year. I just wanted to let you know that we are working very hard to get all these materials available so that they are useful, not just to people who come and visit our library, but for people all over Texas and actually beyond that. So that's all.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
You you mentioned the storage of the assets on a server and you gave it a name. Is that, it's not a city of Bassdrop server, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, it is not.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Last item, counsel, nine D, presentation August thirtieth, twenty twenty four monthly financial statement. Ms. McElwain.
I wonder why you're still back there.
Okay, here are our financial statements. I'm going to go through these kind of fast. Not a whole lot has changed. Let's see, so we are in the red for our general government projects. These are E D C projects that were either, we are either not doing or not complete. That's the contribution that they would be providing. The other is the water wastewater capital project. This revenue relies on. Wait, no, I'm sorry, impact fees. I was on the wrong line. This revenue relies on our construction, and it was slow, but we have picked up in twenty twenty five, so you will see that coming in in October, which is not going to affect these financial statements. Everything else is in line with forecast for revenues as far as August goes. And for expenses, we are over budget in or over forecast in our bond accounts. This corrects itself in September when we issued the the thirty six million dollars of C O's. And then the other is the cemetery fund, which, of course, we had more burials in twenty twenty four than we had originally anticipated. This is sales tax revenue. We are negative three point four six percent. In August, we collected more than anticipated in or more than forecasted in September, but we are still below budgeted amount in sales tax by two point seven percent at the end of the year. We are still above prior year but below budgeted amount. Property tax revenue, we did not collect any in August. It is, we are in line with, we did accurately project that budget amount, though. General fund expenditures, these are kind of consistent as with what they have been over the last few months. Legal fee, legal fees, of course, are pushing organizational over by two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. The city manager line item are the two salaries that we correct, will correct with the budget amendment. Community engagement was over, Mardi Gras was over, and the barricades that were in the budget amendment, Mardi Gras was covered by, within the department, so it was not in the budget amendment. Municipal court is from an employee retiring. Engineering is from more engineering costs than we had anticipated. And then fleet and facilities is a new department. You can see that Public Works is under budgeted by quite a bit, and so those offset. Water wastewater is above prior year. It's below forecast just barely, or but we are still within range. Our expenditures are at ninety seven percent, so we're good there. The electric fund, we are, we are in a positive stance for revenue, and our expenses, of course, are not out outpacing our revenues. Hotel occupancy tax revenue, it's at thirteen point four percent over our forecast. If you remember, we did reduce it in the middle of the year. I went back and looked at September. We are just a hair above what we've reduced it. It's going to be less than thirteen point four percent at the end of the year, but we are still in line with what we had anticipated after the amendment. Our expenditures are at sixty two point three percent, so we are perfectly good in that fund. Development services, we collected more revenue in August due to some inspections that they were doing for, I think, the school district. So we have moved that into a positive area. Our expenditures are at seventy nine point three percent in August, so we are, that that fund is strong. And then we can't really see the legal fees, they, because it's so small, but we are at four hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. But that is missing two invoices. So there we go.
Counsel, questions for Ms. McElwain? I'm so happy to see development services with having their own budget line.
Yes, and it will get better as development comes.
Thank you, thank you. No questions. We appreciate you. Counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?